You ready Greg?
All right.
Yes, I am. These are none, are they? They're on? Okay, we'll call the meeting in order. No, it's not on. Nathan? There we go. Okay, we will call the meeting in order. Thank you. First call, our first item is your roll call, please.
Malsan?
Here.
Glash?
Here.
Schnelli?
Here.
Beno?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Mar? Holdon?
Here.
Majewski?
Here.
And Smithback is excused tonight.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then. Next item is approval of the minutes of September first, two thousand twenty-two. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public appearances. Item four A is a community input. In this part, we have a, it's open to anybody in the, in the audience that wants to make a comment about something that they want to comment about. Not necessarily anything on the agenda, which we will cover later. So is there anybody that wants to speak to something other than what's on the agenda? Thank you. We'll move on then. I'm sorry.
I did have a letter from Judy Knudsen that she wasn't able to be here tonight, but she wanted red for public comment regarding the Fleming condo proposal, which doesn't have a public hearing, but she just wanted to have those comments included in the minutes. So we're sorry, sorry we weren't able to attend. We still have concerns about the preliminary plan for Levelette, De Bergamont, days two condos. Thank you presenting, for presenting this to the planning commission in our absence. Our concerns and suggestions are listed below. Where will drainage and runoff go? How are they doing this through a retention pond? Why, why not have the road go through Augusta to help relieve traffic in the area? Has the fire department approved this? Could mailbox just be moved to the interior, interior to reduce congestion on Bergamont, especially during peak hours? Will cars be required to park off-street and garages and driveways? Are these condos owner occupied to fit the neighborhood? This would be nice for senior housing age fifty-five and older. Outside the set of to match neighborhood, Bergamont deed restrictions? How are they planning on rolling this out? Do they have a timeline we can plan for how long of construction congestion can be expected?
That's all. Can we have some kind of a response to her? Is that possible?
I think I'll follow up with her tomorrow after our discussion.
After tonight? Yeah, thank you, thank you. Okay, we appreciate that. Okay, next item is, is, is item four B.
Five B.
I understand that.
You're right. We're gonna not have five tonight.
No, we don't. What if five go? Four B.
Floor number thirteen.
Yeah, it's okay. Four B. This is for discussion also. Proposed land division by Don Trafty. Trafty? I hope, okay, I'm sorry. For land off Lincoln Road in Town of Oregon. Anybody here, sir, that you? Yeah, why don't you have a seat here, please? Again, tell us your name and give us address where you live and so.
Don Trafty. This thing worked.
I don't know. Didn't sound good either.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Don Trafty, it's my wife Debbie behind me. We're at five, four, three, one, Lincoln Road in Town of Oregon.
Okay, why don't you tell us what you're asking them to do here?
Well, we've been trying to build a, a house on our property and it's right on the border of the ETJ, of the village and the town. And there's, we've been going through the township with that. They've now pretty much okayed it, but we need to come and have you guys take a look at that and make sure, all right, with you guys, that we put that, a house at the very west end, which is right on the border of ETJ.
Yes.
So Greg, I can provide a little bit more context than just a point of clarification. So our ETJ, our extraterritorial jurisdiction actually spans a full mile and a half beyond the borders of the village. The area that the Traftys land is right on the edges, edge of is our planned neighborhood areas, which are shown here in, well, I don't have them all, but in the speckled yellow there, black. And then you can see land that's to the west is in green. That's rural ag used and land that we don't foresee any time in kind of our, our planning horizon of a couple of decades here for the village to be land brought into the village. So we would still review any land division, even if it was land, you know, further west here. But it is an area that in the past, the planning commission and the village board has been careful about approving land divisions because it could impact future development. If there's lots of small farments and homesteads right along Lincoln Road here, if a land sale would happen in the future and a developer would want to come in, we would expect that development would kind of happen on a grid pattern and at the density that we see elsewhere in the village. So there was a request before, I think we wrote the planning commission and definitely the board last spring closer to the water tower on Lincoln Road. And that was a little bit different request. They were actually asking to come into the village and be annexed into the village and do a division of land where the farmer didn't have any divisions remaining. And a somewhat similar circumstance here. You don't have any divisions remaining. The, the town is actually looking at potentially changing their zoning laws and moving some of the areas that are designated as farmland preservation, which I believe your property is currently in that zone right now. So unfortunately, we don't have any language from the town to kind of specifically react to. But I think the Traftys and the town also wanted to kind of get the planning commission's general thoughts and reaction to moving forward with making some kind of language that would allow splits of land. And the town is pretty handcuffed in terms of their revenue sources. So they have a levy limit based on net new construction. There's not a lot of net new construction happening out in the towns. And so choosing particular areas where, you know, in this case, we, he would have, if he moved forward with this, you know, a two-acre lot for the new house and then the eighteen-acre lot remaining for his daughter to live on or somebody else to live on and still have quite a bit of land to use. But I didn't feel like I could necessarily make a recommendation to the town without, one, having more information and, two, running this by you all in the board. I think we just want to be careful what kind of precedent we sent here. If there is a new set of rules moving forward that we know the areas that's going to impact and it's not going to negatively impact the village's growth down the road.
Jeff, you have any thoughts on it?
Nothing, nothing to add to what.
Hello?
Yeah. Nothing to add to what Lisa said. I mean, we're always very careful when we're looking at these border areas, but this is, it is a little far out. We would see our growth more towards the south, farther up on Lincoln Road.
Probably closer to Union Road.
Yeah, yes, that's what I thought. Okay. Anybody else in the planning commission? Anybody else have any comments or thoughts about it?
The only comment, I have no objection to it, but the lot is very, is an awkwardly shaped lot. And so, you know, what is that going to do for potential future development? Is that going to cause issues along that line with the long narrow driveway and then?
Yeah. And Don, maybe you can speak a little bit to your plans. I actually drew that map with the blue polygon there. It's a two-acre area. And that's generally what Don and I had talked about, with something on the western edge, but it wouldn't necessarily be that shape.
No, no, it wouldn't be. Actually, our lot is exactly square right now, completely square. And what we're looking at is on the west end, a minimum of two acres the township is saying, and it'd be just right along the west border between Warner's and our place.
It's almost like a postage stamp in the upper left corner of your existing.
Okay, so the north, north west corner?
Yes.
Northwest corner? Okay.
My response to Don was, I don't have an issue with this particular circumstance. I understand kind of, just given the family circumstances, this would be a convenient way to stay near their daughter and, and have a new house that's a little bit easier for them to live in. My thought was more just making sure that if the town makes changes to allow this to happen in other areas as well, that we're, again, setting a precedent that makes sense for the village priorities that we are charged with, you know, keep me in mind.
Greg, I'm just gonna say, I don't have any objection. I, I understand what they're trying to do and I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I don't think I have either. I think it'd be nice to have it a little bit more representative of what it's going to look like. But again, you're telling us it's going to be probably the northwest corner. You know, like, like I said, a postage stamp. I, I would think anybody that buys the property in thirty years from now, or, you know, for development, or twenty years, certainly could accommodate that and work with it, since it's already on a road.
The, in the past, have we just sort of made a recommendation of no recommendation? Is that sort of been the position of the, of the planning commission?
That's more, more if there's an official, if they have a certified survey or if they have something more. This is not, there's no.
Right, yeah. At this point, it's not unofficial. Like, we have later on the agenda something from Phil Peterson, and that's an official ETJ CSM that's gone through the county review. So, but yes, typically, if we don't have a problem with it, we, we just issue, you know, a statement of non-issue. We have no problem with it. But I think my response would be to Jennifer Hanson, the town clerk, is, you know, can move forward. This particular circumstance, we're likely okay with it. We'll definitely want to see language and, you know, how that's going to work, kind of.
Eventually it'll come back here again. Eventually it'll come back when they do a subdivision and.
Right, yeah. When you actually would do, submit the, the CSM to the town. It goes through the county and then we are copied on that. So when you're actually allowed to do that split and come forward with the map, that'll have to come back to the planning commission. But, yeah, so more, more to come on this. Just wanted to give you a heads up and see your thoughts on it.
I don't have a problem with this either. I think that we need to take a look at this as a village on a case-by-case basis because each one is going to be sticky. And I think that this one is pretty clear-cut and it's well-intended and you're, you know, not out to harm anybody or be harmful. The, we just need to be sure, you know, cross our Ts and dot our Is when we go through and look at right-aways and setbacks and that kind of stuff.
Right, yeah. That's the nice thing about the ETJ review is we're gonna get a chance to see all those land divisions even beyond being right adjacent to the village boundary.
Just gonna suggest good luck for the, working with the county and the township.
I was gonna say, I don't, I'm sorry.
No, he was smiling, he was just smiling.
Typically, you know, and I'm trying to remember, I haven't looked at this, but the right-of-way, do we need additional right-of-way dedicated to partisan CSM? Anytime we usually have any kind of split. But then it is outside of the village boundary, so I don't know if we can even request that.
Right. Because we have jurisdiction on both sides of Lincoln Road.
Not at that, not at that location, no.
What we may in the future, yeah. When we get to that CSM point, whatever engineer or surveyor that you end up using, they'll send, you know, a version of that map to us and then our village engineer will take a look. And if that's an area that we want to make sure we've got future right-of-way along the road marked on there, we'll make sure to catch that and make sure that's on the map before it gets approved.
Okay. All right, thanks for coming down.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay. Nobody cares about six. Number seven, unfinished business, none. New business. Review and consider recommendation of village board for a preliminary condominium plat for. Levelette, okay. Oh my gosh, De Bergamont condos phase two. Applicant is plumbing development. Anybody here from plumbing? Thank you.
Thanks for having me again, guys.
Okay, just tell me what it's called. I'm sorry, because I don't want to butcher something.
Lavelette.
Lavelette.
It's what it was originally, yeah. You know, when we did it twenty years ago or whatever it was.
Thank you so much.
So I was in here a couple of months ago with a very rough concept plan of, of the development. Tonight, I don't know what.
Yep.
Oh, sorry. Talking too fast. Tonight, I, I have a much more detailed condo plat. We, with setbacks and so forth. We, 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 we put the guest parking stalls in, as was suggested previously. We have the road at twenty-seven wide, which we understand would mean no parking on either side. And, and I guess we're okay with that, obviously looking for, for feedback and thoughts, but that's how we have it right now. We have the six-foot utility easement that was, that was asked to be put in there. The cluster mailbox at the entrance of the development. We, we have the driveways at a minimum of eighteen feet so we could, you know, fit a car, park a car on the driveway. And we have the same amount of duplexes versus standalone units. Like I say, just a, a much more detailed condo plat for, for review, so.
Okay. Jeffrey, any questions? Because you were, you're, you're mentioned on here about the recommendation by our village planner. It said, of course, first of village engineers' comments and any director of public works comments for the final plat. So nothing at this point. Anybody have any questions about this? We've seen it.
I have three concerns.
Okay.
I didn't see the original concept, so I apologize. I wasn't at that meeting. But my first concern, you, you talk about the mailbox cluster. I just thank you for pointing that out. The location of that, I question whether that's a wise location. Somebody's pulling in, they're gonna stop, pick up their mail. They're right adjacent to the road. So have you considered other locations?
Yeah, it's, we, we could definitely move that. We just kind of stuck it there for our first draft and for feedback, so.
If I were a resident of that little area, I would want it somewhere in the middle so I could walk towards it.
Right, yeah, that makes sense.
Something to think about there. The first thing I marked up was why the road does not come into Augusta, which I think is what was in Judy's memo, right? And I sketched on there why, why not rotate those last two units on the east and the west so that you can bring that road through?
Well, I, I think we were looking to keep this as a private road. And if we brought it all the way through Augusta, I don't think that would be a private road anymore, correct?
It would still be a private road.
Just based on.
But I, I think, you know, it definitely would have a little more traffic coming out that way, obviously.
Right.
But as far as number of connections does not make it a, a private or a public road. It's really whether it's how it's designed and built.
I could understand it's desirable to be private. I'd like to be tucked back in that corner. I just think about, you know, the traffic flow and question whether it's wise not to have that connect.
It's, it's real similar to the design on, for Eagle Drive down there that was done for, right off of Bergamot Boulevard, right next to the pond, just north of Drummond Drive. Do you remember those? That very, very similar type development. And that was a straight-in with a hammerhead for the fire department.
Right.
But I don't think that one had a connection road opportunity.
It did not have a connection road, no.
And did it have this many units?
No, I think that was twelve or sixteen units. Sixteen or eighteen units, actually, but.
Personally, I have a little, little concern with that. And then, and then the third item is, it's four spaces of visitor parking for twenty-three units. Enough?
I mean, we, we'd like to get, you know, we'd like to get more as, that was, as, you know, it was an easy spot for us to, to stick some in. We can, I can work with the surveyor and see if we can kind of, what we can do to move things around to get some more in. But yeah, that was the easiest spot to, to get four in. So on our first draft, that's what we did.
So I know you probably don't want to hear this, but you could reduce your unit count by two and that would give you some more opportunities to implement these ideas.
I will say on the, the fire department's comments, the width of the road, I'm not sure if you increased it there based on their comments, but he asked for a minimum of twenty-eight feet and then that would allow for street parking on one side of the roads. That'd be a little bit of additional guest parking. But one side would have to be signed for no parking.
Twenty-eight feet? That's more than a drive aisle.
Right, twenty-eight feet still gives you a drive aisle plus parking, two.
Oh, so he would be.
Right, so you could still get your ambulance through and if you had somebody parked.
Looking for parking, allowing for parking on one side.
One side, yeah.
Got it.
Patrick, sometimes on the mailbox, I completely agree with you. But like on Eagle Drive, I believe the post office required it right up at the front. They're getting very touchy on how far they have to drive and how far they have to walk. Not, not because they don't like driving or walking, but because of the efficiency of their trying to keep.
I'm assuming this would not have sidewalks? I don't see anything represented.
Correct, no sidewalks.
You know, to Patrick's point, if you were to take units thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen so that they face the private drive instead of onto Augusta and to Patrick's point, get rid of unit seventeen, I think you could easily put additional parking stalls in there as well as the mailbox, which is more, be more centrally located possibly. It does mean that you would have a reduction in one unit. But I think that, I think that gets a lot of the concerns out of the way, too.
Okay. Yeah, I can, I can work with the surveyor and play with, you know, get up a, put together a model with, with, with those units onto, onto the new road and, and connect them to Augusta and present that.
I would also recommend check with the postmaster on location. They do not like to have their postal vehicles back up. So if this looped all the way through, you'd have a better chance of them maybe putting the cluster box more central in the middle because they wouldn't have to back up to get out of there.
Right.
Alright, so at this point then.
Greg, I have one question, so the developer. Alright, one of the questions, one of the concerns that kind of reoccurring concern is drainage. And so have you been able to look further into that and kind of determine? Because, because as I understand it, all the drainage has to end up at this northwest corner.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously there's gonna be a small amount on the backside here, but, but, you know, that would still go this way. But now, now everything, a hundred percent of everything goes here, including I think everything off of here.
Okay, yeah, we have hired on engineers, but we, I have not gotten anything back from them quite yet. They are aware of, you know, the potential drainage issues, but we have not gotten that far yet.
Since, since you came back first time, I did look at kind of the layout of the Bergamot, because this was part of that Bergamot development. And it was planned that everything would end up at this end, both for this, you know, the phase one and phase two.
Right.
Okay, great.
So we still at this point have a request here essentially to approve or send to the village board recommendation for approval.
Is it a recommendation, it could be a recommendation with conditions, you know, with the suggestions provided by the planning commission?
Which means a whole new layout, does it not? If it does, if he proceeds with that?
If the developer decides to incorporate those comments into the plan.
The drainage hasn't been accounted for, it seems a little premature to do a preliminary plat. They may need more space for drainage and swales or conveyance of water in some fashion, too. So to have a preliminary plat approved and then have to start all over, doesn't seem logical.
Well, it's a preliminary plat, I mean, it's, you know, when, once it gets to final plat, that's when obviously they can't really be moving things around. I think, you know, the developer is aware of what has to be done and accomplished with that.
Yeah, I, I see your point, you know, just the preliminary.
I mean, this, this really doesn't give them any.
Approval.
Approval, no.
To, to go out and move ground or start building or anything, but it, it, in concept, I mean, you know, it kind of does, I think, set some of the layouts and the number of units and kind of that.
Yeah, but some of the changes were definitely substantial that were recommended. So I mean, we wanted to have this separate than the GDP revision and all, and the public hearing, everything, just to kind of use it as another track on the concept. So, you know, we can still, still do a revised preliminary plat if it's gonna look significantly different than what we see today. We could still do that with a final plat on the same night and, you know, keep moving the schedule forward, but.
Okay, makes sense to me.
Certainly check in with me, too, who look at these revisions and we can make sure that we're trying to incorporate as many of the planning commission's comments as possible.
Yeah, definitely.
Alright, so Patrick, what is your, are your thoughts at that point?
So it sounds like potentially we could table this and deal with the preliminary and the final in the same meeting.
I think so.
And it wouldn't slow anything down. So that would be, my feeling is it shouldn't.
Your preference would be?
My preference would be to table it because I don't have enough before me to feel comfortable, you know, that the comments are incorporated at this point.
And how long would you like to table it? Is there a one month, two months?
Till next meeting, if you can get the work done.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can be at the next meeting for sure with the revised.
Yeah, sounds like they'd like to see some of the stormwater plans by then, too, so if you can get that from your engineer and submit that with everything. We can still do the zoning stuff, the GDP S I P as well in November, I think is what we were.
Looks like everybody's in a workable agreement, so let's just table at this point and we'll do that when we want and, and deal with it in November.
Till November, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, thanks a lot, appreciate your, appreciate your input and help with that.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Item. Well, I didn't, that's what I'm questioning.
We didn't have a motion on the table.
Do we need one?
Yeah, let's do it, let's do it.
Probably, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table this till the next, next meeting or till the developers ready?
Yep.
Second.
We have motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion curious, sorry.
Thanks, Greg.
That's my question. No, no, it's alright, that's, that's fine, we'll know better next time. Item eight B, review and consider recommendation of village board for preliminary plat for the Green Acre Preserve Neighborhood, applicant is Veridian Homes.
Greg, couple, just housekeeping point, I don't know why I renamed Veridian's neighborhood for them. I had a better idea for them, but it's actually Green View Preserve, not Green Acre, just to clarify.
That show was out way before your time.
I also just wanted to suggest that I'll certainly do a little bit of a background and obviously the preliminary plat and GDP and S I P all kind of tie together here. But that perhaps we want to do the public hearing for the GDP first and then folks that are here to speak on that can kind of have their comments heard and then we can take that all into consideration.
Just take a quick look, this is, we have a larger audience than normal tonight. So I suspect many of you people are here for this purpose, is that correct? Am I hitting, I got a nod, it's okay, so rather than, I think your idea is good.
Phil just sighed a sigh of relief, didn't you, Phil? Said you just sighed a sigh of relief when you saw they're all here for something else.
We're not here for you.
They will hang around for years, though, however, okay. Alright, so given that, I think what we will do then is we'll just table, not table, just set aside eight B until we deal with eight C.
Right.
Alright, so given that, at this point, then we're gonna have a public hearing to discuss and consider recommendation of village board for general development plan at the green. Green view, there, that's actually a green view. Preserve neighborhood and it's parcels, parcel, et cetera, applicant is Veridian Homes. So at this time we'll open the hearing, staff report.
Alright, I won't steal all the thunder from Veridian and I, you all still want to have your presentation, get the clicker and all that set up? Okay, great. So we have seen the Veridian request a few times, first I think conceptually and then through the conference of plan and then as that went through in June. But Veridian has requested plan development zoning broken up into three different districts. If you are traditional, front loaded, single family, AE, alley loaded, single family, build detached and then duplexes in the neighborhood just north of Mary Hill, land formerly owned by the Lees family. This is total build out of two hundred and nine housing units, two parks and several stormwater management ponds to be developed in several phases. The, the team from Veridian did a great job in their application, kind of showing a side by side of here's what the code requires for, you know, our TR six duplex zoning. Here are the specific exceptions that we're asking for, largely they're smaller lots and so their requests for exceptions on setbacks for the most part, so all of those are outlined in my staff report. But I think I'll stop talking, turn over to the Veridian folks and then let you all hear from the public as well.
Okay, thank you, Elise, so we'll move on to comments by the petitioner, so go ahead.
Awesome.
You gotta give us your name and all that.
Yep, my name is Chris Ellers, I'm with Veridian Homes and it's good to see everybody here tonight. And again, most of you for the second time, some of you for the first time, but what I, what we've done with this presentation today is, is we kind of modified it. Elise had sent over the emails for the, several people had sent over the concerns from the neighborhood next to us there, Mary Hill. And all legit concerns and questions that we'll be happy to answer tonight and, and talk through and, and even put in a lot of detail to back up what we're talking about in the, in the presentation tonight. Myself, Chris Ellers, I'm president of Veridian, I live a few miles away, I've always been looking for the opportunity to be in Oregon because again, we're in all the neighboring municipalities, but just haven't found the right opportunity until finally the Lees farm came up and, and they reached out and we were happy to work with them and really are excited about this project. And then bringing something to Oregon that we've been rolling out in neighboring municipalities such as Verona, McFarland, Madison and Fitchburg. So we'll get into that in a minute here. Greenfield Preserve, we'll click this slide here. With me tonight, Brian Munson, our planner from Vandevall, some of you know him from, from doing work before here in the village. And then Dan Day, our engineer who is here to answer any stormwater questions you might have. We have worked through all the calculations and understand what we're inheriting and, and what's existing out there today and what needs to be modified to take on all the stormwater and, and a few of the challenges that might present themselves. Guiding principles, we really are focused on three big things when we come into a municipality and, and working through and building a new neighborhood. The first one is housing variety. We have over a hundred floor plans and elevations, different floor plans and elevations that would be used in this neighborhood. We don't want to see redundancy or any of the same exteriors side by side, or we have a rule of seven within seven houses of each other because we want to keep total architectural control and keep a variety throughout the neighborhood. We are also a developer builder, we develop all of the home sites, we build all our own houses. This gives us a lot of advantages, especially when it comes to side yard setbacks and making sure that the foundations are in line to prevent any potential side yard drainage issues. Next up vibrancy, again, we just really focus on architectural diversity and, and have a architectural review committee in-house that will review every plan, every color, every option that is either selected by potential customers or people that are building houses with us or spec houses that we're building. Again, just to make sure that there is any redundancy, that there's a collaboration between the different price points. That's what's unique about this neighborhood is that there's a wide variety of price points, which is a little different than what you see around the rest of Oregon right now. We'll have houses in the sub three hundreds, so the goal is to start out at three twenty-nine, up to seven hundred thousand. And that's a little different way of thinking, but it is working in these other municipalities and that's what we're here to show you tonight. And then finally sustainability, obviously we, we want to take care of the land and, and work with a group called Green Tier which has public works, municipal workers and employees from the county, they come together and actually self-audit all of the neighborhoods and make sure erosion control and stormwater facilities are, are above and beyond what's required. Any construction traffic going into neighborhood roads, obviously addressed and making sure that there's no stone or runoff or anything like that into adjacent subdivisions. We have developed like this before with other neighborhoods and I can give you a list if, if anyone wants to see examples of this where you've got kind of a precedent setting housing stock, we have housing in Mary Hill that's, that's, you know, twenty years plus and all the way up to less than a year old and we would continue on with what's being done currently in those newer phases.
Good evening, Brian Munson with Vandevall Associates. And I'll just take a few minutes to walk through some of the components of the neighborhood, but really wanted just to start, of course, where we start with every project and that is the context around us. Again, located in the north, northern side of the community, on a site that is agricultural, but has been slowly developing over the course of, of many years. And so we're excited to take a comprehensive look at the entire property and map out a future development pattern that responds to the site and the surroundings. Of course, informed by the adopted plans, this site's shown for planned neighborhood and indicating opportunity for a variety of compatible housing types within the neighborhood. And as Chris mentioned, the focus of this is really on owner occupied formats, ranging from attainable entry level housing to move up some luxury housing components and then move down and other opportunities. But again, framed around an owner occupied format. And this was really built out of and informed by some of the work that you've done.
We really use this as our guide, especially it's really advantageous for us when municipalities take the lead and, and come up with their own housing study. It's something that's been more recently done here, twenty twenty-one in Oregon. The average, let's see, average vacant residential lot for sale in Oregon is over a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Average price of home for sale is four hundred and seventy-four thousand, nearly thirty-nine percent higher than the median home value in three, three forty-one in twenty twenty-one. I did a quick search today, currently there's thirty active listings in the village of Oregon, average sales price is five hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Average age of those houses is twenty-one years old. So if you want to move to Oregon, you're looking at a move up house right now, that's the options. And chances are that house is twenty-one years old or greater. Again, how does this relate? And not, not that this entire neighborhood is allocated towards attainable priced housing, but it is a segment of it. And I, I think that's what I want to stress to everybody here tonight, there's a wide variety of housing. But it really is focused at the price points that will sell and fill a void here in Oregon.
So kind of building on that plan and developing a format that responds to it, the goal of the neighborhood was to really offer multiple options because a, a healthy community, a healthy neighborhood offers residents choices to be made based upon where they are in their housing needs, whether that's first time home buyer, move up, move down, luxury or attainable. And so the design of the neighborhood reflects that. And, and one of the things that's, that we kind of stress in this process is that as the builder developer, Veridian controls the construction of the neighborhood all the way through the construction of the house. And so as we intermix these different formats and different housing types, there's architectural components to go along with it, but the controls on the construction side and the implementation side really lend their ability to meet those price points at the front end and complete them out on the backend. So that kind of control goes through the entire process, whether that's looking at the zoning, the planning, but then many steps later, looking at all of the details to make sure that it's constructed correctly. So the type of grading design that we have to do, understanding minimum openings, how homeowners association functions, all those pieces that go together from moving from a zoning request to a turn of a key and making sure that those commitments are met. A good example of that, even with the homeowners association, a requirement that the homeowners association hire a professional management firm to make sure that many years down the line, that their obligations are met in a, in a logical manner. So let's talk a little bit about the concept itself. As you can see here, it addresses and develops a plan for the, future development of the entire neighborhood, the entire property so that we can begin to move into a phasing plan, this will be implemented over many years, but have certainty of how that is all going to tie together from a utility standpoint, from a housing mix standpoint and from a character standpoint.
Talk about, real quick, just go back, since the last time we were here, what's changed?
Yeah.
And what the comments we, we received from the public at the last meeting?
Yeah, there were a couple of points. First off, open space, creation of additional open space towards the western side, so circling there, thank you. And a park space adjacent to some of the existing homes and then a park space on the eastern portion. The eastern portion becomes an extension of the Rustic Vineyards Neighborhoods Park and we are anticipating opportunities for trail connections. We've also looked very closely at the stormwater management, not just what's there today, but how does that need to be adapted and improved for today's stormwater standards, but also to accommodate the development of the overall neighborhood throughout. And so what you see here is additional information regarding how stormwater would be accommodated on the site that anticipates the development of this site, but also accommodates potential contributions from the north for the properties that already drain to the south. To walk through the components of the neighborhood, and I'll pause for a second because I think one thing that is important to note on this neighborhood and it's something we do with all of our neighborhoods, you'll see a lot of pictures in our presentation, these are all Veridian neighborhoods. These are all existing neighborhoods, this example being from Grandview Commons, although it's labeled Smith's Crossing, apologize for that, where we've had neighborhoods of this type in the ground for more than twenty years. Many of you have had a chance to see some of the neighborhoods in the Dane County area. But this isn't a exercise in hypothesis, this is an application of experience. When we look at these housing formats, these housing lot, the types of lots, the types of homes that we're talking about, the mix of homes and the architecture, it's all based off of more than twenty years of experience of implementing this type of neighborhood in just about every municipality throughout Dane County. So we're happy to answer any detailed questions you might have because odds are, we've probably come across it at some point in the process. But to talk again about the project, we'll start with the twin homes. There are twenty-two market rate twin homes along the extension of Perry Parkway. This, these are for sale, so there'd be a lot lined down the middle, fee simple transaction. And we do this because it really offers an opportunity for a point of entry, an attainable point of entry for people that are looking to buy in Oregon but can't afford what is currently on the market or available throughout the community. This allows an opportunity for people to get into that housing cycle, whether they buy a house in the future in the neighborhood or a house in the community later on, it offers a great point to come in. The other thing about their twin homes is the design and placement and use of the carriage lane behind it. Really creates houses that while they have a lot lined down the middle, the scale and character of those twin homes really match what you find in a single family format in terms of width and character. You can see here, focus on porches, the garage is placed in the back, really helps create a streetscape that's compatible with adjoining single family. The next step in the format is our carriage lane single family and again, we have seventy-two. carriage-lane, single-families. These offer greater diversity of housing, again, appealing to offering people options for decision-making in the neighborhood. Some people will say, based off of their life-cycle needs, that they may want a carriage lane because the amount of yard space is matching up with what they're looking for. We see that in many neighborhoods, less maintenance, not a greater need for open space. Others may find that they want a bigger yard, and there are homes that accommodate that. And that's the final piece of the neighborhood. So we have 114 of more conventional, single-family that has a front-access garage, and the combination of those three different options allow us to broaden not just the price points that people can enter into the neighborhood, but offer them choices on how they want to find their homes and give them opportunities for entry into the housing market, move up in the housing market or move down, whatever the choice may be. The composition of the overall neighborhood doesn't push in either any direction with a greater proportion. We want to try to offer a balance of choices and respond to the geography of the site. So as you said, you'll see a lot of different house plans that go along with these single-family homes, a lot of different elevations and material combinations, really to help create a neighborhood where the different home types fit within the context of the character of the neighborhood and fit within the context of the overall community. The final piece of our neighborhood, as we talked a little briefly before, was our parks and open space, and we anticipate working very closely with the community to help design these spaces and implement these spaces as we move into the neighborhood, including opportunities for some of the earlier phases to have open space and trails and park spaces in combination with the homes. But then as we move out and move to the east and look at the opportunity to expand on Rustic Vineyards Neighborhood Park, we're anticipating working again. So we really look forward to that arrangement to create spaces that the neighborhoods need, offer different playground experiences and things, and destinations within the neighborhood that aren't just serving the Greenview Preserve neighborhood, but the greater community. The final piece, of course, is stormwater management. We have a lot to accommodate within our neighborhood as well as the adjoining neighborhoods, so the design of that will be designed to create and offer passive recreation opportunities. We'll see some trails adjacent to some of those, but then make sure that we're meeting our needs for volume control and water quality within the site. And that is how we kind of put together the entire part, entire plan. And so we just want to take just a few more minutes here and talk about some of the questions that we've heard forwarded to us and work through some answers for those.
All right. More specifically, the neighborhood next to us, and Greg, you've been great, we've worked with you a little bit and shown you some of our neighborhoods and walked through what it would eventually look like, but there is concerns or there are concerns. And so first one, how does the project compare to the existing neighborhood? Well, it's actually more similar than you might think, and it's basically just because based on the lot size and the garage location. Very comparable in square footage with the expanded housing options. If you look at Mary Hill, and we'll put those up first, average sales price of Mary Hill since January 1st of 2020 was 416,000. Average above-grade square footage is 1766. And then there's a couple, four rent homes in there at 2300. Again, we're not renting any of ours out, they are all fee simple for-sale houses, but I just wanted to put that up there, that there are existing duplexes in Mary Hill, and that's what the going rate is out there for those. Compared to our proposed project here tonight, again, we're targeting mid-300s to 700,000-plus. Average, you know, a range of square footage from 1500 to 3450, and all homes are for sale. Really, when it comes down to it, and I know people were concerned about their property valuations going down, or property values going down in Mary Hill, what it's going to do is it's going to give buyers a choice. People who want to move to Oregon will ultimately have a choice. They could have a 1700-square-foot house for relatively the same price. We will be selling about the same price as what's listed in Mary Hill. They can just choose, do they want a newer house with a smaller lot or an older house with a larger lot? And that's what it comes down to there. There's a variety, and so it really shouldn't do anything to stifle the saleability of existing housing that is in the neighborhood located adjacent to us or in the surrounding area.
Another component that was raised was concerns about traffic and the ability for the neighborhood to absorb additional growth. And when we look at the network of streets that are available, the community's done a great job of planning for this future development of this parcel, as well as projecting for the potential for extension of streets to the north. And so we're confident that the street network can accommodate the number of homes that are being proposed with the infrastructure that's in place. Having said that, we are always open to traffic calming opportunities because we feel that the streets should be walkable, and that's the design and intent of both Mary Hill neighborhood and this neighborhood. And so if there's a need for discussions about traffic calming, that's something we're more than happy to, and we've done that in many of our neighborhoods throughout Dane County. The final piece is compatibility with the plan and existing land use. Again, the focus of this neighborhood is on single-family homeownership. There are opportunities for some attached single-family and a blend of different detached single-family formats and prices, and that really helps maintain the health and viability of a neighborhood by giving people choices, by not having the same type of home available throughout the community. And that, when we implement this over the span of the next five to seven to 10 years, we'll see that gradual absorption of those homes into the overall neighborhood and result in both a good transportation network and extension of the streets adjoining to us, as well as extension of the fabric of the community.
And lastly, we did include, there was a phase map included in your packet, just what, you know, best estimate, about a seven-year build-out is what we're anticipating, but what's important is the phase one, that we do build that park. And we'll work with the village, we like to actually take the lead and build that park right away with a trail connection down to Mary Hill, but it also helps to build an amenity for our neighborhood and help with sales right out of the gate. So our first phase would be right on the left-hand side there and include the park right there that Brian's pointing at.
Thanks, Jeff.
That's all we have. So thank you again, and feel free to ask questions, or we welcome any comments.
I have carriage, what? Do you have some carriage lots? I don't, there's nothing on my map that says carriage.
Marketing term for alley.
Carriage lane house. So let's talk about the alleys, because this is often a question.
Yep.
Again, very similar square footage to the houses that you're used to seeing around town with, but the garage is on the side of the house. We've taken the garage and put it in the back of the house and narrowed up the lot. By doing that, create a little more density, which then brings down your land basis, allows you to come up with the different price points. The alleys themselves can either make them private and have the HOA fully maintained, snow removal, trash removal, everything else, full maintenance, or dedicate back to the municipality. We can go either way on that. It's often a question that's asked at this time of plan commission, and we'll work with Public Works on what they prefer.
Yep. And I would note that whether they're private or public, the cross-section we use is the same because that's proven by having some alleys in the ground in Madison that are public that we built more than 20 years ago. And so lessons learned of how to make sure those stay viable. But again, as Chris mentioned, we're comfortable in both directions. We have alleys that are public and alleys that have been implemented on the private side as well.
Anybody else have any questions at this point? I still have. Your open space on the west side, your park, how many acres is that? Or what partial of an acre is it?
Do you have that?
Dan, do you have the acres of that? Yeah, apologies, we'll get an answer on that. We do note that there's some stormwater adjacent to it, and the intent is to design that to be functional space as well. It's something we've done, and a good example would be down in the Village of Farland, where we have dual-use spaces. They count as a stormwater component, but they accent the open spaces by the way they're designed, so that granted, when it's raining, it's a stormwater facility. When it's dry, it is not. So about 59,000 square foot.
It's a pocket, it's a pocket park.
Yep, so a little of.
But we'll have a play structure and, you know, a few other amenities that we can build in there.
But the play structure, that play structure be susceptible to the water when we have?
No, that would be designed, the park components of it would be high and dry. So the trail, for example, we show there, we would design that to be up and out of it, but then we can expand the open lawn space through the design of that basin, which would be a dry basin.
Okay. Anybody else, any questions?
One question, what is the purpose of lot six? That little, towards the, I guess the southeast, that little triangular shape right there?
Okay. Sorry. So that would be simply kind of a small green that would be landscaped, not necessarily a traditional park space, but we found that just, again, we have an opportunity here to simply introduce a little bit of more public green space along the street edge and give some opportunities for landscaping there. It would be privately owned and maintained by the HOA.
Any structures on there?
No, that would simply be a lawn and green space, so some tree plantings. The other playground area we'd anticipate would be in the eastern park area, as illustrated in that northwest corner. Again, the park designs are representative right now and something we've worked closely with the village to resolve, what kind of facilities you'd like to see in them.
So you've asked, you commented that these are simple fee-based homes?
Yeah.
But yet you've also talked about HOA. How is that sort of balancing out? And is the HOA a development-wide thing, or so it's not really a simple fee-based, it's an HOA, is it?
Yeah, it's fee simple to avoid, you want to avoid the condo, the term condo. You don't want to condo something because there's a lot of lending restrictions left over from the recession back in '08, and I'm sure there's some around town here, but every municipality, there was a lot of condos heading into '08. Then when the recession hit, a lot of the HOAs went belly up. They really didn't have money, and they, the alleys weren't taken care of, and there was a bunch of defunct issues. And so they, the banks put a lot of lending restrictions on condos. And so by creating a fee simple model, and you can avoid that condo term, which basically is just, again, it's a twin unit, but you purchase one side of it. The HOA fees go towards all the common area maintenance and then as well as the alley maintenance themselves within the neighborhood.
Would that be for all the lots in the development?
Yes.
Yes. All the lots contribute to the HOA.
So that's a requirement upon purchase of a house through you people, there is a monthly, yearly, whatever it may be.
Annual.
Your structure is annual?
Yeah.
And that's requiring, and that's simply just continuous?
Yep, and that, and once we're built out, so Veridian controls the HOA until build-out. Once we're built out, we put it in, the covenants, the restrictions of the neighborhood that the HOA forever has to outsource or hire a professional management company because we've seen it in the past, some HOAs can really veer off course if you have the wrong people in charge and misallocate spending. So we require that the HOA outsources all of the financial management to a professional firm, just to make sure that it stays intact.
Another piece to note on the HOA is really those fees are driven by what their responsibilities are. So that discussion of if it's a private alley versus a public alley, the green space maintenance, so we would develop a, we would take an overall look at a budget for what they're going to be required to do and make sure that then those fees are set to that and gives us then the ability to make sure those commitments are met over time.
And then, once build-out happens and Veridian turns over the HOA to somebody in the development to take care of, is there an elected, or is it?
Yes.
How does that happen?
It would be in an elected process. As we sell houses and engage with customers through the years, you start to get to know people who, within the neighborhood, we have a whole committee that works with the neighborhood, and usually people volunteer when it's time to turn over. We have a group of five people that'll volunteer, and if there's more, then we put it to a vote, and we allow the neighborhood to write in and vote on it. But usually we try and pick the people that seem to be most active within the neighborhood to set up that initial board and that transition process.
Do you have an estimate of what the fees would be for this neighborhood? I'm sure they would vary by lot, right?
Well, no, it would be a fixed fee for every lot.
Okay.
But it depends, and assuming that the, for the HOA, that the most expensive plan would be if the alleys stay private, there's required to maintain, if it's a private park and replace, you know, build a reserve fund to replace the play structure in 20 years. I guess about $15 to $20 a month is what it would end up being. It's not your typical condo association that has a big amenity center, you know, talking hundreds of dollars a month. Ours are typically about $240 a year, and people can pay that either monthly or at one-time annual payment that just automatically deducts from their mortgage.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Can you guys talk about the size of the lots?
Sure.
I know that's a question that comes up.
Yeah, so to walk through the sequencing, the twin homes are side-by-side attached single-family.
The purple.
The purple band there along on Perry Parkway. Those are paired up with a lot line down the middle, so a zero lot line, party wall, and those lots would be about 30 feet wide, so each side. So the combined twin home would be a 60-foot-wide lot, if you think about it, you know, between buildings. The single-family on the carriage lanes range from 31 feet wide up to 45 feet wide, plus or minus, based upon a condition in there. And as Chris said, if you look at the houses that fit on those, those are very comparable in square footage, bedroom count, and floor plan to what you would find on a 60-foot-wide front-load, single-family. The difference being, we've taken the 24, 20 to 24 feet of garage from the side yard and put it in the back. So very different configurations in terms of open space and yard space, but again, appealing to different buyer segments. The conventional, single-family ranges from around 51 feet wide to greater than 70 feet wide, depending on where you are within the plat. And so that's done, again, to make sure that we're offering a variety of choices, even in the conventional, single-family that spans a bigger price range and options for each of the houses. Lot depth, which is another factor in all of this, you know, the alley, single-family is 100 feet deep, and so that's why we're able to accommodate a conventional 20-foot front yard setback. So as you look down the street, these will have the same setbacks, whether they're alley-loaded or street-loaded. The street-loaded go from 105 back, potentially deeper, depending where you are within the neighborhood.
Anybody else?
I think I asked you last time, you're depicting a lot of street trees on there. Are those intended to be included, or is that the responsibility of buyers, whether they choose to do those or not, or how do you handle that?
Well.
Oregon tells us how to handle that.
Yep.
That's a requirement we have of all new subdivisions, at least one street tree, two-inch caliper, no more than 20% single variety throughout the whole area.
It's a requirement, but does Veridian plant that tree and include it with the product, or do they pass that responsibility on to whoever buys it to plant that tree?
No, we include that, we come back and plant. We like to wait, if the village would allow us, till the houses are built, and so you don't have concrete trucks.
Yeah, we'll hold, we hold letter of credit for that amount until we get the trees planted as well.
Okay, that takes care of that. And then, all the pictures you've shown, of course, are slightly more mature landscapes, but what is included in your typical product as far as the front yard landscaping on these different product types? What's included for sale when somebody buys one of your products?
Everyone, it goes up based on, you know, what size house you're buying. So obviously, the single-family, you know, the larger, yellow lots will include more of a landscaping package. We work with Bruce Company, they're our partner, our trade partner with landscaping. The alley houses all would include a tree, a planting bed, and then turf, grass in between, all of that. You get a little more strategic in that even the landscaping plans really have to be predetermined and dialed in because you've also got electrical boxes and everything else. So every square inch is really accounted for, especially in those alleys. As you move out, there's bigger landscaping packages you can get with the larger-sized lots.
But every, every home would include some level of designed and installed landscape?
Yes, yes, yes. They're given an allowance and a, or a package to choose from, and it's all, again, done through Bruce Company, who would be out here working on this.
Enough for us right now? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the public input part of it. Okay, folks, what we'll do, if anybody wants to speak to this, please come up to this microphone and introduce yourself, relax, this is all, I live in your neighborhood.
Is that supposed to make them relax?
There we go. So please, you know, just. So please, you know, just come up and tell us your name, your address and, and tell us what your concerns or your thoughts are, plus or negative. Thank you. And we have a brace hole right away. Thank you.
Why not, right?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
All right, my name is Andrea Day. I live at nine fifty-two Mary Hill. So I'm kind of at the southwest corner of this development. You know, I, I have no issue with the idea of the density. I think the amount of variety and I love the attainable term that you have for the market, or the prices. But I think, you know, with the comments to traffic, you know, when we look at it, a lot of that is all coming south to go onto Richards, back out to Madison or up to the main roads. So I see some indications moving north, but I think if we think about two hundred-plus homes, that's probably close to four hundred cars. And then when we look at the way everything's laid out, kind of everything from that, you know, the east carriage houses is naturally going to flow west and down to Richards and out. So all of a sudden that intersection where we live is probably going to have, you know, two to three hundred cars a day kind of moving through that. So I wanted to know if there's any plan for further expansion then in connecting a road to the north and how we can help alleviate some of that, because that will be busy.
I can speak to that.
Go ahead.
Basically, it's just working on pulling it up. So for those that aren't aware, the Oregon School District purchased the Donaldson property, which is in the city of Fitchburg, just north of the area that Veridian has under contract right now. And there's a plan for a east-west connector road for, to serve those planned schools and some playing fields up there, as well as an extension of Perry Parkway that would become kind of parallel to County M and that roundabout there. And so that road, that east-west road would also, this is a conceptual plan by the school. There's nothing's been approved yet, but this is the, the network. And we've shared this plan with Veridian so they can make sure that their road alignment matches up with what the school's plans are. But I think we would find, just based on traffic patterns, lots of people working in Madison, everything, that hopefully people will be going north and, and it will help alleviate some of that traffic.
Just balance it.
Neighborhood road, right, yeah.
And what's the timeline on that or at least the, you know, that first initial north road development?
Yeah, so the school could of course take bits and pieces of this development, but they will likely need to go to a referendum to have, you know, construction start. I think the middle school, a new middle school is in the plans first and then potentially down the road a new elementary school, which is on the northern, northeastern side of that lot shown there. So referendum, we haven't heard an exact number, but it could be still another six to ten years out, just depending on school enrollment growth.
Sounds good. Thank you.
My, my lineup, depending with, you know, Veridian's plans on the full buildout of the neighborhood, but lots of factors at play.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm up? I have handles.
I guess so.
All right.
All right, thank you for having me. My name is Scott Hagan. I live at ten seventy-six North Perry Parkway, which would be the house, kind of the last house on north. Yeah. All right, you know, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss with you the proposed Veridian development, which connects into our neighborhood. And our house, like I mentioned, is on the north end, North Perry Parkway. And I'm, I'm joined with several other members or neighbors that also live on North Perry Parkway. You know, first of all, I want to point out there's aspects of the proposed layout of the development that are really nice. You know, the walking trail around the retention pond along North Perry Parkway is a good feature and something that is needed on this side of the village. You know, we, we don't really have anything like that at this time. You know, if you want to go for a walk or whatever, you're kind of restricted to sidewalks, which, which are adequate. But to have something like this comparable to what's off of Alpine Parkway on the other side of town, I mean, that would be a really nice addition to what we have. You know, when we were looking to build our home back in two thousand thirteen, the developer at the time, Jim Lees, provided us a plat map depicting the ten lots, making up the fourth edition of Mary Hill. So that's kind of the, you know, the, the ten lots that are, that are, I guess, the newest phase of, of North Perry Parkway. He provided us, provided us that. And then we kind of went through selecting the lot that we did. You know, along with that, he provided us a conceptual plat, which I just handed out to you guys. And, you know, I'll, I'll be the first one to admit, you know, we understood it was a conceptual plan and conceptual plans can change. But, I mean, that, that's what was presented to us. And, and when, you know, I can respect the, you know, what's been put forth here. But I guess if, if changes were to occur, I would expect that maybe a street would change or maybe you're adding a cul-de-sac or, but, but the fact that, you know, we're going from roughly a hundred and fifty single-family homes to now a density of over two hundred mixed-use, that's a big change. You know, that's a big change from what we were led to believe would be, you know, the future of that, that development. You know, the concern we have are the proposed twenty-two duplexes along North Perry Parkway and the high-density housing units directly behind them. You know, without any transition, the proposed development places the lowest-priced, highest-density housing units right out our front door. This level of house doesn't really fit our neighborhood. I mean, when you look at what's in place today, without any transition, you're moving into kind of a, a multifamily-type development. It just doesn't look or feel right. I mean, when you, when you compare that to the other, I mean, granted, I, I appreciate the presentation that was given today. It answered a lot of my questions. I think, you know, there's a lot of neat features. But just where those proposed row of duplexes are, it just, it just doesn't fit with our current neighborhood and also what we were led to believe would be the future development. You know, it just, you know, from a developer's perspective, I think it makes a lot of sense, right? I mean, you're, you know, they're placing a significant number of price-point homes and duplexes in a small space. I mean, that's a, that's going to provide a pretty significant return on your investment. So I can see it from a development perspective. You know, I, I want to point out, it's, you know, it seems like there's been several discussions between the village and the developer. You know, and I, I apologize in advance that, you know, this is the first that we're coming forth. But, you know, I've, this is kind of the first, the first time I've ever been involved in village or, you know, city government planning. Didn't really know what was going on. But, you know, the concern that we have is that the existing, it doesn't appear that the existing neighborhood or the neighbors were taken into consideration when, when this plat was, was put together. You know, once the development decision is approved, it's the neighbors that are left having to live with the outcome and impact on our home values. You know, we appreciated, you know, at least sending out the, the mailing. We don't know if she had to do that, but, you know, that was, that was a really nice kind of thing to receive, kind of explaining what was being proposed and kind of walking us through what the process is. So we, we appreciated that. You know, we, we also appreciated, you know, the, the time, Jeff, that you, you took to kind of respond to our concerns and kind of give your perspective. So we do appreciate that aspect. You know, I also want to point out, we're not opposed to more affordable housing options in the village. I mean, obviously that's, housing prices keep going up and up and, you know, along with that, taxes and cost of living and everything. So, you know, there's definitely a need. But what we are opposed to is having them adjacent to our existing neighborhood, especially knowing the original plan called for similar-sized lots with similar-sized homes to what we have today. It also, I mean, I gotta be honest, it made me nervous when I was contacted by a local realtor friend of mine, voicing their concerns to what this level of high-density, lower-priced housing could potentially do to our housing value. I don't know what the impact, but I'm, you know, just, had we have known that this level of density was going to be right out our front door, we probably wouldn't have selected, you know, that, that portion of the village to build our house. So, you know, myself, along with the other, you know, neighbors here that'll probably talk, you know, but we're really asking for the following: removal of the duplex units from along North Perry Parkway; transition the high-density lots behind the proposed duplexes to standard lot sizes that meet current zoning guidelines. You know, again, when you look at this, it's going from an existing neighborhood to, you know, these multifamily units. You know, it would have, this would have been a lot more appealing if a transition could have occurred with similar-sized lots in price-point homes, similar to what's going on off of Stoddard Lane on the other side of, of the development. You know, and another comment, just in looking at the plan, you know, it's, we feel you need to incorporate more green space into the development. The current plan is very little park space. I mean, there, there is green space allotted, but majority of it's stormwater management. You know, and we understand that development is trying or tying into the existing Rustic Vineyards Park, but that really doesn't seem to be enough to support this size of development. The targeted demographics that Veridian listed are first- and second-time homebuyers. This means that we're going to cater to families with kids, right? There can be a lot of kids in this proposed development. That means, you know, the, the current Rustic Vineyards Park playground, which is right behind our house, you know, on nicer days, there's a ton of kids playing on that, on that playground, running around the park. So it's, it's really, it gets utilized. I'm not sure it's realistic to assume that that park can accommodate two hundred-plus additional families. You know, and one thing that, that Veridian did address, you know, what consideration has been given to controlling the increased traffic? You know, if, if the proposed development is approved, it's, you're going to place forty-plus homes along and immediately adjacent to North Perry Parkway. I mean, that whole purple and then the higher density right behind it, that's a lot of houses. It's a ton of houses. You know, this is just way too much and not acceptable to the existing neighbors. You know, just consider the traffic that that would bring. North Perry Parkway is, I mean, in our mind, I am not a engineer, but it's, it's not set up. It's not set up to be a main thoroughfare. I mean, that's a, North Perry Parkway is, it's a residential street. I mean, it's, it's no different than any other residential street that's in the Mary Hill and other, you know, adjoining neighborhoods. That, that would just be a tremendous amount of additional traffic flowing through there. So in summary, you know, as much as we, we like the layout of the proposed Veridian development, like I said, a lot of neat features. I mean, you know, that, that, the walking trails, the, the way the roads are laid out, I mean, it's a, it's a nice design. You know, we're, we're just against any zoning changes that would place duplex-style, high-density housing adjacent to our neighborhood. You know, Veridian's proposing a thirty percent housing density increase over what was presented to us previously. This places a significant burden on our existing neighborhood as well as the existing infrastructure. I mean, you're, you know, not only from a neighborhood perspective, but, I mean, just when you look at traffic flow, patterns, you know, it's just, it's, it's a significant change to what we were initially led to believe would be there. You know, as I mentioned earlier, we're not against affordable housing. If this is something that the village is seeking, you know, a location should be found that connects into a neighborhood of similar home styles, lot sizes and price points. It should also be placed in an area where persp, persp, perspective buyers, sorry, understand the type of housing they are purchasing next to. You know, we moved to Oregon because we liked the small-town feel. I mean, this is a small town, it's a village, it's a great location. What is being proposed has much more of an urban feel, similar to what you'd find in a larger city. In the end, you know, I feel Veridian would do a great job. I mean, there, there are many advantages to having a development go in, go in by a reputable builder. I mean, they talked about a number of them. They're controlling the, the, the types of houses, they're controlling when they're built, they're controlling the park space. I mean, there's, there's a lot of advantages there. I mean, I, I work in Sun Prairie and really like what they've done with the developments there. You know, it's nice, great use of green space. But in our case, the duplex-style units and higher-density homes, they just don't fit. They, they just, I mean, they just don't fit what, what we currently have from a neighborhood perspective. You know, once again, thanks for your time. And I'm hoping you'll take our concerns into consideration and strongly reconsider the proposed zoning changes. You know, I'll open it up to any other neighbors if they have some comments.
Which I hope are somewhat less-winded, so.
Oh, I can keep going.
Oh, I know you can. You, you, I'm impressed. I am impressed.
I've been told that I'll sit by my dish and everything.
That's okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate your thoughts. Ooh, I don't like, I don't like applause. Thank you. Anyways, anybody's watched me for thirty years, I don't like that. But go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is James Conrad. I am a resident of one thousand nine North Perry Parkway, just down the street from Scott. I would like to echo many of what Scott, Scott's points were. However, I think that the, the duplex-style houses, much like what Scott was saying, doesn't fit our single-family. If it were put in any part of the... Not the cemetery. If it was put, put in another part of the neighborhood, I think the transition would be a lot less jarring in comparison. Because if you were to switch some of the single-family lots to Perry Parkway and have the denser on one of the side streets there, it would be clustered together in a way where it would flow better. The other concern I have is with the duplexes along Perry Parkway and the, the extension that is going to go into Fitchburg. I'm concerned with the park across the street. I have two sons of my own that would want to go to the park all the time. Those duplexes there are going to be full of kids. There's going to be a lot of families there. And I worry about the traffic count going through there and the accident potential that could occur with the density of traffic going through there. So that is my piece.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Hinkle. I live at ten forty-nine North Perry Parkway, right across from Scott's, right at the dead end there. I moved to Oregon in two thousand twenty. Obviously moved to the community because of the good schools and, and many other factors. One of the selling points of this house was obviously it was right at the end of a dead end, had that country feel. I grew up in a small town and so that was very appealing to me. Now, I'm by no means against development and progress for a town or a city. But I am opposed to this type of design here, just like Scott said. And Scott spoke very well and really hammered all the points that I wanted to make. So I'm not going to rehash that and be long-winded for you guys here. But just wanted my voice heard to let you know that, no, that's okay. That there are many, many of us on North Perry that are opposed to this design, not the development. Again, I think a single-family developed home development is, is the way to go or at least repositioning some of where these twin homes are. And then lastly, again, the traffic flow is a major concern. Even if it goes to single-family homes, traffic is going to increase significantly on North Perry Parkway. We know that, obviously, the school, the high school's on there. People are going to go down to Netherwood, which is a very busy road and a major thoroughfare for the town to get out of town if you're going east. So traffic's going to increase tremendously in this area. So I'm not sure if the village is in charge of incorporating speed controls, not only in this new development, but in our street, I think there needs to be speed controls, speed bumps, something. I have a sixteen-month-old now son. I have a 16-month-old now son, obviously, I'm training him well to not go out into the road, but right now with it being a dead end, you know, the families are used to going out in the road, so we certainly need to control traffic, not only in the new development, but on the existing road where we live. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Diane Whitehead, I live at 1050 North Perry Parkway, so next to these gentlemen that already spoke, so I will try not to repeat everything they said, but I will echo parts of it, though. Our concern is really the twin home layout and the high density homes near our existing neighborhood. Like Scott mentioned earlier, we, we fully understand that the, the design that we were given when we purchased the lot back in 213, 2013, wasn't necessarily going to stay the same forever, which we can accept that. The struggle we have is just moving the twin homes to the neighborhood where we are. Moving the twin homes closer to areas where there's already duplexes makes more sense to us, and would appreciate that sort of consideration as this design goes forward. We are also very, very, very concerned about the traffic on North Perry Parkway. Having that become a major thoroughfare for people going from the roundabout to the high school is, is going to be very difficult to manage, we think. We already experienced a number of people coming down our street, and it's a dead end street, getting lost and turned around because they're looking for the high school. You can usually tell when there's events going on at the high school because you see more traffic coming down our street and turning around. I can only imagine what that will be like with the, the additional homes and that becoming a major thoroughfare. So, we really hope that the commission can reconsider this design and does not move forward with the twin homes and the high density homes near the existing neighborhood and look for alternatives. We also are concerned about the idea of a limited amount of green space and park space. Like Scott said, the Rustic Park, or Rustic Vineyards Park is used heavily. My daughter was there tonight, as a matter of fact, with a number of other people that were playing softball and soccer, and with you adding all these additional homes, I'm, we're very concerned about where the kids are going to go to play, and they need their space, so we're hopeful that you will consider that in, in this proposal. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Got more folks, anybody else wanna say something? Certainly, sir, come on up.
Hi, my name is Adiu, I am a resident of 890 Violet Lane, so right up on the northeast corner. So, this is a sim- a question for, I guess, the, the city, that, so we're looking at about 200 plus homes, and so if we assume that each home is gonna have at least one school, one kid of school going age, is, is the city or our, our school system, our Oregon School District are able to absorb 200 plus kids in the, in the span of five years, five to seven years? And then the second question I have is, so I'm looking at a design, and I don't see any, like, parking spaces for the parks that are in there, so is that, is that maybe an overla- oversight, or am I missing something?
I can address those questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, first regarding the parking spaces for parks, so most of our neighborhood parks do not have off-street parking spaces, some of our larger community parks, JCPark, Highlands of Netherwood Park, have their own off-street parking lots, but majority of our smaller parks, our neighborhood parks, Rustic Vineyards, for example, do not have off-street parking spaces, so, not to say they can't be added, but that's consistent with what we have elsewhere in the village. Regarding the school district, so, the school district every couple of years works with their own planning consultants to forecast growth for the school district, and so just, within 2021, I went through every neighborhood with their planners and talked about our expectations for growth in each different kind of sector of the village, and so this was one area we've always expected to grow. It's a little bit denser again than what was forecasted previously, but part of the reason the school district has purchased that land to the north is because they do expect growth in the future, so there are plans for a future middle school, future elementary school, some reshuffling of the current schools and which grades they will provide as part of their kind of long-term plans, so, something the school district is always taking into consideration is they know that there are areas that, this is already within the village, it's, you know, ripe for development, and so they expect, you know, within a certain time window that there will be children coming from those homes, and it's a pretty interesting process, because the, the lower price point for the homes, as mentioned, there's typically more younger kids versus a, a neighborhood that you see larger homes at a higher price point, that's typically a family with older children, and so it might be more growth on the middle school and high school end of things versus elementary schools, so, as this plan moves forward, the school district, I know, is very engaged and they're aware of this, so they, they have room to grow right now, and then that's why they purchased this land just to the north, is for accommodating future growth, not only here, but elsewhere.
So, we estimate that we'll be able to absorb the influx of, the big influx of kids into the school system within the next five to seven years.
Right, and, and one component of Veridian's plan, as they shared, is this would be a phased plan, so built, built out over about seven years and built in phases, and so as those homes get built, those families move in, it's, you know, maybe a couple of dozen kids at a time across all ages coming into the school district, but the new Forest Edge School has a lot of room to grow, there was an expansion done to the high school, so the, the school district still has room to grow, and that's why they probably won't do a referendum to build the new schools on the Donaldson property for another, again, six to 10 years, we, we estimate.
Right, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Nikki, and I actually, that's my husband, so I live at 890 Violet Lane, and just in looking at this, like, where the twin homes are, I'm thinking, my opinion, obviously, is they would be better off more in the middle where, where the different colored shades of orange ones are. That would be more, like, people coming into the neighborhood, that would be expected, it would already be the plan, versus like, for the people that live on North Perry Parkway, just kind of like chopping from single family homes to, to the twin homes. So that is just my suggestion there, and then also, I know it's very minor, but we live on a dead-end road, and we have, like, a row of trees behind us, that's not, I think some of them are officially on our land, some aren't, so my concern would all of those would be wiped out. I know some would have to be taken out for the road, but my concern is that our whole, like, all the trees aligning in our backyard, which we really enjoy, would be gone, so that is also, while very minor, a concern that I have, so. And I think that is all, but yeah, I voice what everyone else has said about just having so many houses and the influx of people and the kids, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Stephanie Bergman, I live at 495 East Richards, actually just moved in this summer, so newer resident here. One of the things that I wanna talk about, I know it's been mentioned before, but particular with the parks, again, I know the parks are already highly used, with the fact that the houses are gonna be taking out, are taking up much of the lot, I think the need for parks are especially greater when there's not gonna be green space in the, you know, lot itself, so I do think that will be an issue with so many houses, you know, with such small lots. Again, another thing that's been discussed, East Richards Road already has a fair amount of speeding, you know, I have a toddler and very, very careful with her playing, even, you know, we like to sit out on the porch sometimes and watch when it rains, and you know, even when it's raining, we still have people just speeding up and down, and we're at the end, you know, a couple of houses down from Perry Parkway there, so we're definitely already seeing a lot of speeding, so kind of anticipating increased traffic as, as well with that, is kind of one of our things. Another question, I know this was just brought up, if, as, in terms of the tree line, so our backyard, you know, down East Richards has this, you know, really nice tree line kind of between our lots and the, the current, you know, farmland, I guessing based on this, this plan, those are all gonna be taken out, is that correct? Because I think they're currently all on the farm, is that?
Yes, it is, it's.
Okay.
I live across the street from you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, that was just a question I had to, to confirm with that. Yeah, that's all.
That's it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you for input.
Chris Isley, my wife and I moved to 375 East Richards in 1996, I've enjoyed the Oregon community and knew that someday, looking out my back door, cornfields, excuse me, might no longer be cornfields. Just a couple of quick comments and I guess a clarification, if understood correctly, will the parks and the green space fall under the homeowner association or the village responsibility?
Would be a combination of both, so, the area shown near the stormwater pond there, and then the park would be public green spaces, a couple kind of easement areas too, but that small, little teardrop space would be a private green space, really just maintained to, to serve those homes there on that narrower curve, so that would be maintained by the HOA, but there would be some public park space as well.
Okay, I guess my one concern would be is if any of the green space did fall under the village, just so that we have adequate resources to maintain those spaces, given that amount of growth. I live down the road from Greg, and I would echo Stephanie's comments in terms of increased traffic and concerns for speeding along that road. And in terms of the parks, the other comment I would make is certainly some additional parking, depending on the size of those park spaces, I think would be attractive and allow for a little bit better use of those spaces. I think we do have some parks that have limited use just because of the, the lack of some parking availability.
All right, thank you, thank you. I'm meeting a lot of new neighbors here, so.
Hello. Robert Branson, 920 North Perry Parkway, I just moved to the area in April, and I do also have a concern with the traffic flow down North Perry Parkway, I mean, it's like a badger game now, I can imagine with the homes coming here, if each home has like two cars in the morning. I also dislike the real duplexes down, you know, where all these, like, higher priced homes are existing. I see that they, they're kind of on the outside of their development for obvious reasons, because they don't wanna put them next to their upscale homes, but I think it has a reverse effect on the neighborhood. I think that's all it is, but I just see that, right now, I see two ways in and out, and I know they're coming down North Perry Parkway, they're not gonna come out this way.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Few more folks, no? Okay, we'll open up for Plan Commission comments. Who wants to go first, anybody? I'll start. I hear a very, very common string of comments here by the, by the public, and looking at it, and I have gone through, and, and I have looked at Veridian's stuff along with Elise, we went and visited some of the sites. Their product is, is a nice product. I am also not a real fan of the lots, I personally don't like 31 and 37 foot wide lots, so that's just my personal opinion, I don't like them. Another issue here for me is, is in the village, we've always been consistent in trying, especially when we have a new development come in, we try to do what we call step-down zoning. We try to, to go from a normal, single-family housing, which is our old R1 zoning, which is now SR.
SR4.
SR4. And we will always ask typically that we have at least one more of those in the new development, or two, and then you can start stepping down to maybe duplex or whatever it may be, and then, which then also goes down if you wanna go to some other kind of higher density stuff. So, that's something I'm gonna, I'm gonna wanna see in, in this, in this development. I think it's only fair to the residents that came here before that, that at least we accommodate their concerns about not having something that's a much lesser, miss, much lesser in size, much lesser, or a different, a different product than what they would assume would be next to them when they, when they built their, their facility, their, their building. Those are my main concerns, and, and maybe we can talk to Veridian, see if we can accommodate some of that stuff, but, but I'm gonna be strict in my comments about absolute step-down zoning, and it'll, it'll occur at every single location where they interface with the existing facilities. Anybody else?
I'll give it a stab. My initial concern was traffic, looking at the development, particularly how it's gonna funnel out short-term. Seeing the master plan and again, being reminded of what's happening, I think in the long-term, it all makes sense, that, that traffic will go north. That said, North Perry Parkway, I think always was intended to be a feeder route, a major feeder route.
It's a major arterial.
It's a collector, it's Collector Street, correct?
Yep. I appreciate your concerns as homeowner, homeowners, I can tell you, I live on Main Street, and we live with it. You are gonna see increased traffic, so, the, the traffic issue for me is, is less of a concern, knowing that ultimately, yeah, short-term, five to seven years, you are gonna have to deal with it, long-term, there, there is a solution, and a well-thought-out solution. The second issue, I, I appreciate the step-down concerns, and I guess I would ask for developer comments and potentially looking at what other options, I, I see a potential to flip the locations of those twin homes and have a easier step-down, because that is an abrupt transition into housing types, so I'm sympathetic to that. There was a comment about, is there enough park space, and I guess I would like, and Jeff, you might be able to answer this, a comparison of park space percentage for this number of units or this acreage, so, how that compares to the rest of the village?
Well, we, we've talked with them about this, so, so, you know, the park space is something that is clearly identified in our zoning ordinance of how much park space they have to either, either put into the development, or they pay fee in lieu of, which is, and that fee in lieu of allows them to contribute, which then allows us to buy park space, hopefully, close by. I'm, I, we've talked to them and said, one of our concerns to Veridian has just been making sure that we are not counting stormwater ponds as park space. I mean, yeah, it's not viable playing space if it's an active stormwater feature, so we'll be working with them on that, but, I mean, that's a comment you can give to them, but, you know, it's not that, everyone kinda has to fit that, fit that.
But you still.
Formula.
Thank you.
Of, of park space, whether it's provided for in the development or fee in lieu of.
And I don't think I've seen that exact number from Veridian, maybe you guys have that number, but the calculation of either the total square feet of park space that we required, given the 209 units, or how much they've planned conceptually that you don't have as their fee in lieu of, it would be helpful to know kind of that breakdown, if there are opportunities for more park space in the neighborhood, or... or I don't think our ordinance has a requirement that it has to be all land dedication or it could be all fees. Typically a combination of both that we've seen.
Okay. Scott, you have any comments? Any questions at this point?
Not at this point.
How about you?
I, I went over to the Veridian, or the Verona and just sort of looked. I, I liked what I saw. I, I understand the, the issue about the, the waste of the lot. They don't, for me, it's not something I would want, but they don't, they don't hurt me. I think the issues that we sort of have to deal with are these, these twin homes issue and the parking. But I, I have to give Veridian credit. I mean, they're, they, they have looked at a lot of issues in this development. And so I, I gave you credit for that. You thought a lot about this. So, so I think some of these things can kind of be addressed. I mean, I, and I, I want to say, as being on the village board, I mean, the thing we always are hearing is nobody can afford to live here. Nobody can afford to live here. Here's the chance on a price point that people can afford. So, I mean, I, I like that, that aspect.
I would encourage everybody to listen to the village board meeting or go to the packet from this last Monday and, and and go through Martin's recommendation memo towards where we as a village are. I mean, this is a, this is a missing demograph, or this, missing thing for our village. We do not have entry level homes in our village right now. And, you know, the village does survive with the way the legislature has held funding for villages. Villages and communities really only survive based on their net growth. And, you know, the village is in need of growth and in need of development such as this. The only other comment I have on the alleyways, they will be private. They will always be private. They'll be shown as private. And it's just because we don't, we, we can't take responsibility for them and plowing them and that type of thing. So.
For me, it, for those that don't know, I live in the neighborhood. I live, I have a block from this. I mean, I'm, I'm right in it. But for me, it boils down to two things and that's economics and choice. And right now, as a plant commissioner, we don't have the authority to work on economics. So the only thing that we have, that we have some flexibility in is choice. And this subdivision, while I have to separate myself from what would I want or in, for a house, I, I wouldn't live in all of these types of homes, but it does offer a choice in housing types. And, and for that aspect of it, having talked to a Realtor friend of mine where housing inventory right now is at one and a half percent, it is non-existent. There are just not homes on the market. And the fact that this is providing an opportunity for single family homes at, at varying price points is, is something that the village needs. I, I completely agree that there needs to be some sympathy to taking some of the duplexes, twin homes, whatever you want to classify them as adjacent to some of the single family homes and turn them into single family lots possibly so that there is some sort of buffer between the existing single family homes and the twin homes. That is something I think that needs to be taken into consideration for homeowners that are worried about their property taxes or values. I have never, in my 30 years in the business, ever seen any development decrease the value of your property, ever. So I, I wouldn't be concerned about that. So, but I would encourage, we can't talk economics, but I would encourage Veridian to not get too caught up in the HGTV effect and put in solid surface countertops and stainless steel appliances and jacuzzis that belong in the Ritz Carlton and simplify some of the products in the home to even lower that price point further to under 300,000 if it's possible. That's the type of opportunities I think that we need in the village for multiple levels of homes and purchase prices. And then to take another look at how this meshes with what's existing and adjacent to it a little bit more. I'll step off to the soapbox.
Anybody else? Yes.
Yeah, from the younger point of view, I think to echo the infrastructure question, it is pretty far extended from all of the local businesses, which would be clustered on Main Street. And the park question, if you have 400 houses, you're going to have 400 kids and 400 cars that have kids in them going to soccer practice and schools that are well extended from this neighborhood. At least for the time being, it's going to be kind of a dead end neighborhood. It is a dead end neighborhood. And I think when you have that much traffic flow, we, if you can kind of take a shot at both birds by introducing some sort of additional recreation within that kind of enclave. So just putting emphasis on what happens at the parks, what people are moving towards to hopefully keep some more of that traffic in, limit the number of trips that people have to take outside of the neighborhood. Especially if you've got newer families coming into more affordable housing, which is incredibly important. They're not going to be able to drive. They'd have to walk from that upper corner all the way down to Main Street just to 14 year olds going out to Firefly or to soccer practice. That's going to just exponentially increase the risk there for traffic issues with cars crossing an army of 400 kids on their way to school or soccer practice, whatever it may be. So kind of putting an emphasis on really utilizing that green space that there is now could hopefully kind of alleviate that and on the home value question as well. If you have that, I think long term, that growth and the kind of newer appeal of those houses that are brand new as opposed to 21 year old houses. Long term, you're going to get a lot more energy around Oregon that is in no way, shape or form going to have a negative effect on how attractive your house is to sell. If you have a brand new park and new housing and new families moving in. I think in the, the long run, long term and short term, that'd be kind of a benefit for existing homeowners.
Thank you, Nate. Thank you.
The first he's spoken like in six meetings, right?
That's well done.
That's the first I've met him. Wow, okay. Thank you. We'll talk later. You can sit right here. Okay, so we have no other, Matthew, you haven't said anything yet. Are you going to say anything? Not yet? Okay, buddy. Okay. All right, so at this point then, if we have no other comments, we will close the public hearing and move on to a discussion. Chris, you came up to the, you want to speak to something apparently or not?
I just, again, to answer questions, I didn't know if they were, the way it was being phrased.
Well, we're going to have some more discussion here, so yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to stay here or do you want me to?
You can stay right there.
Okay, well do.
I don't think any other folks in the, in the audience want to come up here and sit down. I don't think so, but some may. He might.
Let's get Scott back up here. Chris, do you happen to have that number for the Parkland dedication? Have you done that?
No.
Yeah, I hadn't seen the scorecard calculation for your parks yet, so I didn't check that against kind of the guidelines, but.
We would, and again, it's, it's mixture of formula of, of the dedication and then the, the fee in lieu of which we obviously would pay and then that can be used for, I'm not sure how you have it structured to, for future park construction.
Acquisition, yeah, just for acquisition it can be used for.
Well, that would, that could go a long way right now, I'm sure. So, yeah.
So, so Chris, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but can you say something about the, the twin homes?
Yeah.
Comfortable? Maybe you're not.
No, I am. Okay, let's put it in perspective for a second here too, because I'm, I'm looking at it and the twin homes are, if you look at it, are on one side of the street. All right, their garages are in the back to that alley. They're not in the front. So you're going to only see the streetscape. Across the street from those twin homes is a park. So if you took that same linear footage of Broadway and copied it in Mary Hill and you have two, two houses on each side, it's probably a little closer than you think as far as the traffic counts are concerned, if, if that's one issue. The other stigma is they are twin homes. They are not for rent duplexes, which happen to be in Mary Hill on the other side of the neighborhood. And in fact, have nicer single family homes planned adjacent to those if you look at the map. So I'm going to have the same problem on the other side, if you, if we're designating this a problem. So it's, it's on both ways. Yes, could we, could we try to, to flood or swap the alley? We've looked at it. It's just, it's more of a topography issue is really the drawback. If you go and look at the cemetery, the cemetery's elevation is pretty high up. Those lots adjacent to the cemetery, there'll be a lot of steep grade coming down. With an alley, you have to have flat grade and that's the key. You have to, because that minimizes your steps into those houses. So it's very hard. You know, as, as easy it is on paper to say, let's just flip it. It's very hard to do that in real life. Now, is it something we can go back and take a look at? Sure, I'll, I'll go back and really put a concentrated effort on it because I understand the concerns that we're hearing from, from, you know, the, the adjacent property owners. It's a change. Right now, it's a beautiful farmland. This isn't all coming on at once. If best case scenario, we'd start the first phase of development next summer. Construction on the houses would start a year from now with the first people moving in, you know, in, in the second quarter of 2024. So nobody's going to be out here for a couple of years. Again, it's not going to pop up overnight. These things take a tremendous amount of time to, to build and, and close. So just to try, help kind of keep things in perspective with that statement. But again, yeah, so you'll go back and in, in the meantime here, just take a, a hard look at it. I just don't know with the grade if it's feasible.
Thank you.
See, I've got a, I live with duplexes across the street from me.
Yeah.
And they're pretty crazy. One of them's a single dad raising his teenage daughter and the other one is a high school teacher. So they're real crazy people. But is there any interest or opportunity to take some of those twin home lots that you've got adjacent to the existing single family homes? And maybe go down from instead of the first four twin homes and make a single family home that still has a still has a garage facing backwards or something so that there's some step down, some buffer that, that has been mentioned here?
Like in these first ones? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
I mean, if you do orange, the orange.
Well, probably both sides only because.
Orange and orange?
Well, you've got to look again, if you go on the west side of Perry Parkway, then you go to the south, you're crossing that street. You again have the standard, what we call a standard village lot right now. So and that's again, my, you know, I, I, we've been very consistent. And you know that.
I know. And I also know, I also know what homes are going for in your newer neighborhoods.
I understand that.
And they're not selling. They're not. I mean, the National Builder that's on, on the other side of Fountain, trust me, I watch them on a daily basis because they're legit, you know, they're a threat and they, they're coming in and promising everything and, and overspending on everything. And those houses are sitting. They're not selling. There isn't one sold yet. I looked it up today. Jim Lampy's building kind of a modified carriage. It looks good across from Bergamot. I mean, that would be similar to what we're doing, but our price points will be, you know, smaller because we're developing.
I can appreciate that, but I'm going to be pretty, they can outvote me, but I'm strict on step down.
Yep.
And, and when you mentioned the, the fact that in the other parts of Mary Hill, where we have some single family homes and we have like what John's talking about duplexes, that was all platted at the same time. So when the people bought their single family homes, they knew across the street was going to be a duplex.
But what would have prevented him from coming in with the next phase and plating duplexes? That was always the big unknown. It was, Mary Hill was platted, a small portion of it.
Well, we probably would have had some comments about.
The last time Jim came in to receive permission for Stoddard Drive, I believe it were these lots right here, the entire plant commission at that time said, you cannot do this again until you have platted the entire subdivision.
Correct.
Yeah. So that was kind of his last, that's enough. Because he was doing it very peacefully. But.
If I could address just the, the design piece for, for, for a quick second of why the, why are the twin homes there? Simple. And it's something that we've looked at in numerous neighborhoods throughout Dane County and in Wisconsin is to how do you integrate different formats of housing and end up with a neighborhood that's seamless? Because if we only build single family, we know what the price ramifications are of that. So when we look at integrating twin homes, and we've got numerous examples, we'd, we'd love to have folks go take a look at, whether it's Grand View Common, Smith's Crossing, up in Wanakee, over, brand new in Wanakee, over in Verona, are good examples of ways to integrate different housing formats. And the biggest pieces we look at are the building itself. How do you design it in a way that it looks like a single family home? And as we saw in the pictures, those were, those are existing twin homes, same format. The benefit of the alley moves the garage to the back. We compare that against the twin homes that are available already in the neighborhood. So on the west side of, of this property, there are some twin homes that were just built right next to single family and the existing in New Haven. You know, the idea that these can't be intermixed is, is not backed up by the, the reality of the way that they can be designed. They can be designed to wait, to look like a single family home minus the garage. And, and that's really what we do by looking at the architectural details of those so that you get a comparable massing, a comparable architecture, comparable materials, done in a way that the focus is on the porch and the house, not on the garage. So by doing that, we've, we've got some examples where they've been in place for 20 plus years where if you didn't count the mailboxes or look at the double doors, you wouldn't necessarily know that they're a twin home and that they fit in quite nicely. And, and again, they offer choices for people. You know, and along Perry Parkway, as, as Chris mentioned, the benefit this gives us is allows us to to move the houses to the west side of the frontage and open up the park frontage for everybody rather than have to string houses on both sides to achieve the same, same outcomes. And so the benefit of that, again, a larger park space that's available and visible to the community, we think is a benefit of that, that the twin homes do offer.
Okay. I don't know what the solution is. I think we have some more work to do here, all of us. John's idea, and, and again, the step down, I don't know if we necessarily have to have 80 foot lots, but we certainly want something. You're going to put 65 foot lots in this place, a number of them.
Yeah, along the cemetery there is a.
Yes. Well, anyway, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that I'm thinking, I'd like to see you guys go back at least and try to address what these folks have to say. Rather than just we're just going to go by them and say, no, we're going to just let you guys do what you want to do. I don't think that's appropriate for these folks. And that's not the spirit that we've done in the plant commission, I don't think, over the years. Most of us have been here for a while, fortunately or unfortunately. So. Where do we go from here? I don't know. I'm going to make a suggestion. Since this is all coming on, the folks here have just seen this in the last week. I got a copy also of the letter that Elise put out. I would, I would think we should consider tabling this particular approval at this point for a period of something like maybe two months or so, whatever it takes to get some kind of a a rework, if you guys are willing to do that. I think right now to go ahead and say that yes, we'll approve it, I think is, might be a little bit of a push. We'll go to a drawing or to a vote if you want, but I'm suggesting we all look at this for another month or two and see what else can come up with. Is there some? You guys have done this for years and years. You know what you're doing. You know how to, to rework things. And I, again, looking at your, you know, it's not like you're going to be building tomorrow. I know you want, you have a timeline, but it's not going to be building tomorrow. How do you guys feel?
I'll, I'll echo Greg's sentiment. And I'd also ask, you have, I, I've heard that as you get close to the cemetery, your elevations are more difficult to deal with. But I have to ask, you have an island in the northwest corner of houses and could, could that not become some of the twin houses? And then take those lots where the twin houses are as a step down transition area. Again, that's without knowing the topography, but as you look at it, that's the thought that comes to my mind. You're, you're close to other alley lots. That would help satisfy some of the neighbors' concerns about that transition without, with hopefully maintaining your, your viability and, and number of units. I like your development. I think it's appropriate. I think you know the market best and if these houses are going to sell, that's good. My initial concerns of traffic, I still have concerns of traffic. I'm sympathetic to that. My initial concerns of traffic, I still have concerns of traffic, I'm sympathetic to that. But again, long-term, I feel there is a vision for that.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would ask again, timing is somewhat of a key factor here, but can we have one month? We come back a month from now.
If you can get ready in a month, that's be fine.
We will, we'll do a full dive into it, we'll look at smart guys. But I can't, can't promise anything, but we'll take a look at it. And can you name the top couple concerns here so we're all on the same page before we, and step down? Can you define that for me? What is in your mind here?
What, what we've done, in my understanding, what we've always done in the past, is when we say step down, and Brian knows what I'm talking about, he's been working with the village for a long time. When we go from the old, well, the S.
SR4.
SR4, which is single-family residential. And we're going to go to the next lot. If it's a new development, completely separate from the development this first one was in, we need to have something like an SF, SR4. I like the old R1s, I just do, but S.
No, it is.
SR1, SR4. We go to that, we need to have a buffer between the existing facility that somebody bought last year, 20 years ago, and who's going to, the new people coming in, you have to have something that's other than a twin home.
So a street in between them is not a buffer?
No, no, a street does not do it. A street does not do it.
Just to be clear, Greg, would you, are you saying that the alley-loaded, single-family lots, the orange ones that are shown on the other side of this kind of Perry Parkway alley, would that feel like a step-down or something more like they're yellow lots that are the wide lot?
More like yellow lots, more like yellow lots.
Just want to be clear.
And again, you know, there isn't a single lot in this proposed development that is equal to a standard village lot at this time, not a one. I get it, you tell me you can't do it because it's not economically feasible. Okay. I, I was never in the, I was in the industrial side of construction, so I don't know.
But maybe there's an alternative. I mean, like you said, you've been doing this a long time.
I'm going to, okay, yes, we will go back, we will look at what we can do. In the same time, I challenge the rest of you, drive some of our neighborhoods between now and then and understand this is the direction that housing is going, and it really is. And I know, I know we've talked about it.
I know.
I know, we keep butting heads. I get it too, I grew up, big backyard, it's the way we're all used to, but that's, that's not today's, I don't want to say youth or Gen Z or first-time buyer, first-time move-up buyer, younger demographic. A little more inclined to having a pocket park and having a smaller yard for an attainable price point, still having all the square footage they need. But the meeting area now is not necessarily in your own backyard, but it's at the community park or at the pocket park down the street. And it's really the direction that, that housing has gone here in the last number of years. Just haven't seen it quite yet in Oregon, haven't seen it yet, so.
No, you haven't.
You haven't, I know, and I've been watching and looking. And it's a new way of thinking, I understand, it's just, it's not what's always been done. It's not Bergamot.
It's not that expected. Yeah, I'm just trying to put in perspective, I've got, well, I've got a number of grandchildren, but I got one family of three. And they need a whole hell of a lot more room than what's going to be in the 31 or 37-foot wide. But they, you know, I'm trying to envision how they do it up there.
But also there's, I mean, we're in an inflationary period.
I get that, I know.
I mean, yeah, there's a lot of young families with young kids that want a ton of space for their kids to run around and play, but the reality of today's world is they can't afford it. Can't afford it, and they can't afford to live in Oregon.
Possibly, we have one, yes ma'am, I'll let, typically we don't, but go ahead, what do you got?
I'm just going to say, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak.
You, you're allowed to speak anytime you want.
As someone who is a millennial and I, you know, know people who are going to be $329, they're not, they're not, I make a lot, my husband makes a lot, and we're very poor at our house. I know people who are, I'm not saying, you know, obviously there are going to be just people that can't. You know, it's still very expensive for a house. I realize they need a new house, but it's not necessarily bringing in the first-time buyers. I know second-time buyers that are still in that $300,000. My friend, he just bought a house in Oregon, or in that $300,000, which he made out of house previously, that they're able to sell at this top of the market that happened this summer. So from my perspective, I don't know the whole real estate market, but from my perspective, someone who's even used to move a lot for people by generation, this is still not necessarily the first time.
Okay, well, we all can argue, everybody can argue.
Well, the comment was made about the 200s, and that, that is the goal. I say 329 now to curb expectations. These houses sell for 279 when market conditions are normal. The other thing, we don't allow bidding wars. We keep, as soon as we list the house for 279, the first offer that comes in, we take it. I noticed in Maryhill, any houses that were priced under 300,000, they got into bidding wars. And they got bid up to 300,000. We do not do that. We understand that we're a volatile piece of controlling that entry-level market. All of these people that are buying, the typical people that are buying these entry-level homes, they're moving out of apartments. Every one of them is moving out of apartments. And why? Because the rent in the apartment is more than what their monthly payment will be on a house, even with 6% interest rates. That's how crazy the rental market is right now. And so again, to help just put things in perspective, I know 329, that, that does sound like a lot of number or a high number. Hopefully, you know, it's less than that by the time we get there and are building out here.
And I, I don't want to get into too heavy, even a part of the conversation.
Okay, yeah, no, I know. And again, we'll go back, we'll take a look, we'll see what we can do. And if we can, I'll have a good list of reasons why, but we really will explore it. And maybe there are some modifications you can meet in the middle here.
Yeah, if you can get them out here, I think we could, at least we can send them off to the neighborhood a little bit, possibly.
Yeah, so I think I've got a good list of all the comments too, so happy to try to summarize an email tomorrow. But procedurally, you have closed the public hearing, so if we, if you decide to table, you know, all three of the Veridian items, the preliminary plat, the DDP, the SIP, we can move those all forward to the November 3rd. Thank you, Joy. Planning Commission meeting, we won't have to post another public hearing, but we can certainly do another mailing. The Village Planning Commission packets are all available about a week ahead of time on our website too. So I encourage everybody who's interested, go to the Village homepage, there's a little link called e-notify, it looks like a little envelope, you can type in your email address. Any of the meetings you're interested, Park Board, Planning Commission, Village Board, you'll get a link as soon as those are posted, so you can take a look through those. So even if we don't have opportunity to send a letter, they'll be available a week ahead of time.
In fact, that's great, so the audience understands you can have access to this information, to the packet, and you are welcome to come to the meeting. We don't close the door on you, so. It's November 3rd, right?
November 3rd, yep, it's the first Thursday.
At 6:30, if you want to come, you can go back and look. And the agenda and everything will be posted on the website, along with the attachments. Everything that's been presented here is on the website. Okay, so we have a motion. Yeah, we have a motion.
Table.
Yeah, we're going to table all three items. Can we get them all three at one time?
B, C, and D.
Yeah, B, C, and D.
Correct, okay, we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posted, motion carries. Thanks for all your effort, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to the folks that came down, thank you, you guys are great. I appreciate the civility.
Hey, Lisa, I got a procedural question.
Do you need a break? Does that need a break?
I'll tell you what, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
But, yeah, what's your, just a.
Are you an item C by approving a general development plan? Are you proposing that we are rezoning via doing that? Or normally we would have something that says rezone.
A DDP is a rezoning, it's a zoning map amendment to plan development.
[inaudible]
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 Exeter. Exeter, okay. Mr. Peterson. Well, we've got to take care of him. Okay, Exeter territory jurisdiction review certified survey map, sorry, submitted by Mr. Phil Peterson for land division off Lathers Road. And you sat here all this time.
Nope.
And you can tell us what you're going to do, but we can tell you how we're going to handle it, so.
All right, good. Phil Peterson, 1275 Lathers Road. Yeah, there's a football game on too, I guess. But that's quite all right. You're the guys that make local government work, so you're getting paid by the hour, I know.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Let's see here, I don't know, do you have my picture?
We do, yep, I'll have Jeff scroll over to it.
Oh, okay, so anyway, this, this proposal, of course, is, is our partnership, which is our family partnership. And we're proposing doing this land division and zoning changes to kind of clean up some previous survey maps that we've had. And also then, there's a couple of lots that we're establishing, which is along a tree line, which is a farmer, they're always a nuisance, and also doing a little estate planning along with this. So that's the reason why.
You guys know where this is?
They could blow it up.
This is the backside of Bergamot here, this is the big Bergamot Pond. Over here is Riviera Street. So this is the, as you head out on County Highway CC, you pass Bergamot Town Homes. And then the field on your left is Peterson's Field.
Okay.
And that first private road you see is, is it Lathers, Lathers or?
Yeah. Got it, before the airport.
Yeah.
Before the airport.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then this is that road that comes back, and it, this is Phil's home here, I mean, you can talk about it, it's just kinda.
Yeah, so Phil, um, did us the favor of reaching out a couple of weeks ago, so Martin, Jeff and I, um, met with him and his son to just review this and, um, again, this is in that same area, um, kind of that planned neighborhood area, but it is already an existing development with this cul-de-sac and a couple of homes here. So this is really just getting squaring up some of those lots, making a couple of those lots a little bit smaller, so that, um, you know, Phil and his family can do a little bit of estate planning, perhaps have a few more neighbors, we don't really see this impacting, you know, future development for the village in a big way, there's already development there, so it's really just continuing that pattern and keeping it pretty contained to this cul-de-sac. So, we're recommending the village, you know, not oppose the CSM, uh, we'll move it forward to the board if you all are okay with that, and then, um, sign off on the CSM, so Phil can get this recorded.
So we'll, uh.
No, I know where that, sorry. I ended up looking up from my phone.
Phil, do you know is, is Lathers Road a sixty-six foot wide right of way?
Yeah, it, it isn't now, but it's, it's there, you know, it's, it's, uh, I think, what do we, how many years ago, the towns automatically, when you had a forty-eight, I think it was forty-eight, and then, uh, you know, the legislature automatically took that land from the farmers, as far as that's concerned, so they're all sixty-six foot road.
Okay.
Even though we're farming some of it right now.
Don't tell us that.
So there's, there's right of way, this is a.
Corn and the.
Hey, we're paying taxes on it, too.
I think we need a motion, um, to not take an opposition to this, uh, certified survey map.
So moved.
You have a motion, maybe a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion, second. Thank you. Sorry to put you through that, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
You saw democracy in action.
See you, Phil.
Item. For information only, proposed zoning amendments, uh, okay, it's for information only, you gotta read it. In the packet, okay, G, information only again.
Greg, can I say something?
Sure.
So, um, well, it is for information only, um, I've, I wanted to let you know and get any feedback, if you had any, um, this is kind of an ongoing list of text amendments, uh.
Oh, I'm sure you said that.
To, to clean up, there's sort of three categories, short-term changes that are things that Jeff and I have kind of been accumulating over the years, um, to clean up, there's chickens and bees, they're kind of still a gray area, we've got, I think clarifying some of our language on concealed fasteners, driveway setbacks, fencing, things like that, so probably things that are relatively not very controversial. Um, midterm changes that are gonna be more of a policy discussion, probably stemming a little bit more from the board, and then longer-term changes that I think after our comp plan update, uh, next year, we'll be able to incorporate a little bit more easily, so I just wanted to, to show these all to you, um, I don't know if you have had a chance to read them in your packet, uh, if there were any that you feel, especially in the short-term list, that you would like to move out into that more of a policy discussion, um, midterm range, we can do that, um, otherwise, if you, if that generally looks okay, um, we'll probably bring this back to the board one more time, and then start working with Van de Waal on actual language, um, which, of course, you get to see before it's approved, but how we would actually, um, go about wording some of these changes.
As you know, I'm that goomba that reads this stuff beforehand and writes notes, so, um, yeah, the first one, the update, the definition of family, um, I think it would be helpful if you gave us examples. Cause I'm not really, you know, what, what are you, what are you talking about, or specifically, can you give us some examples of what you're looking at for definitions of family? Because I agree it's changed over time, but what does it mean? I'm gonna give you pushback on the reduction of five feet to three feet, um, because I think that with snow plowing, um, we need a place to have an area for snow to just accumulate adjacent to a dry aisle or, or whatever for that five feet. And three feet does not give you enough room to really plant anything that's gonna survive, other than prairie grass, um, maybe an herbivita, but there's enough herbivita in the world.
Yeah.
This is a side yard setback.
Yep.
Okay, just I wanna make sure, cause you were talking about snow plowing.
Driveway paved surface setbacks reduced from five feet to three feet.
To the side, to the side yard.
Yeah.
Right, so it's like side, uh, RV.
RV pads and stuff, so what?
Is this residential or is this commercial?
Residential. So, what, what, what we have is a problem, I mean, this is a continual problem, seventy percent of the people that call both of us, and they have a house and they wanna put their boat along the side of the house, or whatever, right now, it's a five.
It was great.
That's what I got.
Five, five-foot setback right now to the property line, it used to be, I think, two or three feet, was it?
It was two, I think, in the last code.
Um, I was actually pushing for two feet, I, and I saw this at three foot, and I, I, either I think is fine, but there are so many people that if they go with the five-foot setback, they can only have maybe a five-foot slab.
Yeah.
And it is a contin-, everyone always says, well, then I want a variance, and I let them know that.
What's the hardship?
There is no hardship, right, and so it really doesn't meet the variance criteria under ninety-nine point nine percent of the cases. So, this is more or less, I think, our res-, you know, there's a lot more people with boats and campers and stuff, um, and.
Suburbans.
Suburbans, or kid, kid cars.
All right, so this isn't commercial stuff, I thought it was like commercial stuff to a par- side property.
No, 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 this is for side property line for.
Never mind.
For pads.
I see driveway.
So you think two feet would be good?
I think if you, uh, if you go to anything less than the five, you would have to be a lot more careful to specify things like drainage and elevation changes, because somebody wants to bring their slab off their driveway, and then pretty soon, you know, the neighbor's got a big jump two feet from the property line, they're pushing their snow on the neighbor's property, drainage swells.
Welcome to our world.
I, you know, but the tighter you put this, the more of those problems are going to crop up.
Yes, yes.
I mean, they do with five feet, and they're gonna really be a problem at two feet.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't go less than three.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I think if you are gonna reduce it, you, you know, to permit those items, you would need to require better plans and elevations and drainages and things, not just say, go ahead and.
I would love.
Pour some concrete. Cause the neighbor's gonna, you know, get the brunt of the mistake, and a lot of times, those projects are kind of DIY kind of things, and not always.
Yep.
Well thought out until afterwards, and.
Right, yeah, one thing I will say with all these changes, especially these kind of short-term ones, is Van de Waal writes a lot of codes, has done a lot of updates recently, um, so we definitely would take a look at what have other communities done, how have they worded it, and what has worked well or hasn't worked well in some of these revisions and updates.
Um, you had a comment here about clarify that gravel and pavers count as paved, uh, do we, uh, isn't that sort of covered in the stormwater definitions of, of surfaces?
It's not clearly outlined in there, people will, people have said, okay, well, I'll only, I'll stay the five feet away, but I'm gonna put the rest in pavers, and then we have to say, well, pavers are just considered the same as impervious.
Oh, so they, they wanna ride to the what, lot line?
They wanna ride it, take pavers right up to the lot line, and so we just have to clarify that.
That's right.
And they were, the only reason why I'm saying that is if, if it was defined somewhere in an engineering document, for instance, then you're not having to sort of mentally bookmark that to change it every time a new product comes out, every time a new something happens.
Yeah.
Now we're having to, by going down this slope, you're all of a sudden having to set yourself up to constantly have to.
Yeah.
Change that thing.
Although we're already having that conversation, you know, with boats anyway, I think the more places you can put clarifying language, we found, we just send somebody, here's the fencing section, it's as clear as day, we're gonna get a lot less calls and save us a lot of time.
Add to the fence, we don't, in, in our fence code, we don't technically allow PVC, but that's something that's come in since, I mean, fifteen years ago, there wasn't such a thing as a PVC fence, so.
Yeah, some of those materials.
Acceptable materials. PVC and.
And the other, there, you guys will definitely see lots of versions of this language before anything's in, you know, in all of this, um, format, so.
The only other one was, um, can the conditional use permit be, um, limited oper-, can we limit the oppo- opportunities to use it somehow?
Yes, so, um, with Act sixty-seven, that was passed a couple of years ago, you know, the teeth that we really have as a community to deny conditional use permits really aren't there anymore, so as long as everybody, as the applicant says, I'm gonna meet all these conditions, we really can't say no. Um, and so one thing our village attorney is recommended is that we just move things, either being approved by right, or they're not allowed in that zoning district. Um, you can also create zoning districts that aren't on the map, so for example, if we decide that we, as an example, don't wanna have a mobile home park in the village, we would only allow that in a zoning district that we create, but we don't necessarily have on the map, somebody could always request to have something rezoned, but, there are certain uses, you can't say, no mobile homes, you say, well, only in this district, but it's not on the map, um, as of today, so I think that's, again, some of those things I need some legal help on to make sure we're not, you know, getting ourselves in trouble, but, um, you know, why have conditional use permits if we basically have to, it allows another step for us to review, you know, operating hours and site plans and things like that, but if we have a site plan review anyway, and we just include, you know, some of the additional features we'd like to see in the site plan, we don't have to have a conditional use permit if it doesn't really serve any purpose, we can't say no if they agreed all of our conditions, so why not just have it be approved by right, but you have to meet, you know, standards per your use categories for a gas station or for car repair, so, again, I, there's value, I think, in the way, in what we review in conditional use permits, but maybe there's a better way that we kind of structure it, so we're not, again, um.
I think there's value in having it, having it come here, because then the, the process is well documented, and the, the procedure and the agreement of what they're understanding and agreeing to is here in public forum, and not, you know, in some back office paperwork kind of thing. So I think there's value in still having them come here, even if we can't really deny it, you know, it, it's still a very open process, and the neighbors, you know, get notices, and, you know, so it's out there, and people will know if they're not following the conditions, because they were at the public hearing.
Right, and here's the list, and.
So I, I think there's still value in having conditional use as permits.
Right, yeah, that was a suggestion, again, I'm carrying forward for Matt, so I'd love to hear his, you know, maybe we'll have him come to a future meeting, kind of explain the, the ins and outs of Act sixty-seven, and how we see in other communities either keep conditional use permits or make changes so that they still have some level of review, but it's maybe called something different.
Okay, good.
So, more to come on that, one I'd said, let you know, that's a ongoing, for a lot of this stems from the affordable housing report and some of the recommendations there, so we've, again, added to this list as it goes on.
Okay.
This is another big one.
Property maintenance, which, which we don't have.
Siding, shingles.
Painting, siding, shingles.
We did the zoning code last time, we purposely stepped way out and around that one.
Leaves, things like that.
Yeah, really, and, and then also enforcement, um, enforcement and fines that we can kind of slap on.
And I think that was the reason why we sort of sidestepped that one.
We, we dove into the topic, and, I mean, more than a toe in the water, and, and, you know.
Yeah.
With, with our consultants, you know, kind of explaining the path we were going down, we decided to get back out of there in a hurry.
We don't have a lot, like, I mean, if someone says, my neighbor hasn't painted their house in thirty years, um, and there's really not much we can, I mean, unless it becomes a public nuisance.
The renter, right.
Right, and, you know, and their neighbors call up and say, it's hurting our home value, and, and they're probably right, I mean, to us, that's the one situation where I would say, you know, if you're got a house right next to a really rundown junky house, it's gonna affect your ability to say.
And Jeff, how long, how long did Washington Street take us to, a couple of years, one minute, Washington Street?
Garage?
Oh, oh, that was, that was, uh, almost two and a half, three years, yeah.
All right, um, G, Cypress Way, approved by the village board, the over ran, ran us.
Done.
Thanks a lot, Randy. Review and possible renovation village board, scope of services for twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan in parks.
I'll try to be brief here, um, hoping to get a little bit of feedback from you guys on our comp plan, um, options, so, uh, essentially, we have a silver, gold, and platinum plan, uh, that's been quoted to us from Van de Waal, um, the basic update meets all the state requirements, and then the standard includes more opportunities for participation from the public, um, beyond what would be required, kind of just by the basic, and then advanced, there's all kinds of interactive tools, scenario planning, everything, um, we also are lining this up with our park plan update, which is done every five years, and so there are opportunities to save some money, save some time and effort to do, you know, kind of one community survey that's gonna ask questions both on planning, but on park and rec stuff, um, we could probably use the park plan as a chapter for park and recreation within the, um, the comp plan itself, so we do have, uh, about ninety thousand right now budgeted just for the comp plan, um, in our CIP next year, so even if you end up on the higher end, we've kind of cushioned ourselves, uh, if that's the direction the planning commission and the board wanna go with the advanced update, otherwise, we can certainly meet all of our requirements, but, um, I'm not sure what we did last time, cause I wasn't here ten years ago, I don't know if anybody kind of remembers the menu of options, but I imagine they probably went with kind of the middle choice. Um, I don't think we have a lot of those interactive tools, and they probably weren't available as much ten years ago, um, so that kind of would be my recommendation, is to go with the, the middle of the road option, knowing that we're gonna do some work on the park plan as well, and I think together, we'll have still a pretty robust array of public engagement opportunities, but I don't think, again, given, we have a lot of other vegetarian considerations at the village, I think the plans will still do what we need them to do, and I don't think we need a whole lot of bells and whistles, but just my opinion.
What do you all think, standard?
I, I read through it, and I highlighted standard.
Yep.
So, yep.
I think where we need to spend, spend a fair amount of time is in the future land use maps, that's what all of our amendments the last few years are related to, is, you know, redevelopment of properties and things like that, so trying to anticipate, you know, some of that, so that the plan isn't, have to be updated twice in, in a couple of months.
Right, yeah, give us a little more flexibility, and if we do wanna pull out an area like Market Street and North Main, we've talked about doing like a small area or neighborhood plan, so we would still have room in the budget to say, oh, this really looks like we need to take a deeper dive to get, always add that on later, because we haven't maxed ourselves out from the get-go.
So you need a motion, recommend the village board approval of the, uh, the standard ten-year updates and the standard update, uh, for the, uh, comprehensive outdoor recreation.
So moved.
Second, Bano.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Standard comes with the undercoating, too, by the way.
Spot-free, spot-free rinse.
Yeah.
Air freshener's not.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Wax, yes.
All right, we do have a discussion, uh, regional, Dinkarn Regional Planning Strategy and Possible Appointment of a village of Oregon representative, I'm busy.
John, do you wanna introduce this, do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, you all remember this winter, Olivia Perry from the county, um, their housing planner came and presented, um, the regional housing strategy has sort of come out a lot of the surveys, work that they, work that they've done over the last few years, and, um, we've been invited to have both a staff and kind of elective representative to participate in the regional housing strategy, I think the majority of our neighboring communities have a, a rep there, uh, this is just gonna go on for one year, they had their kickoff meeting last Wednesday, and John went on our behalf, so I was just getting back from a trip, and our board had a joint board with, um, joint meetings, so they weren't able to attend, but this is this once a month, four a year, um, I think most of the meetings are either gonna be at the Luther Heritage Center, at, um, Lake Farm Park, or at Lion Energy Center, or on Zoom, um, but has kind of, again, a housing focus, John, maybe you can shed a little bit more light on just the, the goal, I think there's sort of a plan that they wanna have at the end of it, but it seems like it's pretty interactive.
So, um, there's a packet that, uh, well, is in your packet, that basically spells out what they're looking to do, they've hired a consultant group out of Chicago that does this stuff across the country, and they came in, and, um, they have an agenda that they are sort of looking to push, um, and, um, it's gonna be spread across about twelve meetings, twelve months, to, uh, come to a solution.
And the goal is? And the goal is to have some kind of, what, shared goals and plans that can turn to on a regional level and say, we're, I mean, what I heard from Olivia is that they would like to have more specific understanding of, yeah, we need affordable senior housing, but what does that actually mean in terms of unit size and location and proximity to amenities? And, but, maybe you heard something different.
It, it, in my opinion, it is a organization that has an outcome that they're looking for research to back up.
And what is their outcome, do you think?
Their outcome is that they want to have a specific type of housing in a specific, specific location, and that type of housing and location is going to be used everywhere regardless of your intention for your community individually.
We don't know John's thoughts on regional planning.
Well, it's, I, I have no problem with regional planning as long as you can maintain an individual identity.
Right.
And, um, and this is very specific that you, they, you, they presented that you are able to speak your mind and give your individual thought process, but here's your six choices, and if you're an individual, you can write it here. So, you have six choices to make, and everybody's choosing the six choices because the one that you have to write on, you have to write it. And, and since nobody has the same written choice, they take the six choices that they gave you to pick the top one. So, of course, they're sort of leading, herding this group of cats in a certain direction. And I, like I said, I, my opinion is that they are, they have a solution, they're looking for research to back up.
So, given that, does anybody want to come?
But I, I, I thought I heard it had to be staff and elected officials, but we're not elected.
Well, it can be appointed by the village president, so. Me, it's, so, yeah, often, she said that, I don't know, and I wasn't there at the meeting. I think some planning commissioners, some people who are on, you know, committees, we have a DEI committee, we have, you know, sustainability committee, we have our board members, um, it's certainly another meeting to put on everybody's calendar, another night away from home, so I, um, I don't know, I see the value of kind of just being, again, at the table, knowing what's being discussed, but, you know, the outcome is kind of to be determined.
It's a good group of people, and, and there's a lot of people there who are looking for solutions. So, there is value in that. I think there's value in, um, telling people how Oregon sort of handles things, you know? Uh, I talked to several people from Windsor in the forest who are struggling with growth right now because it's a lot of, um, apartments and, um, multi-multi-hundred unit apartment complexes. And, and they've got people that are upset that it's changing the identity of their community. And I said, well, in our comprehensive plan, we have sort of this pie about, does it still match up? Does this development match up to sort of who Oregon is? And some people at the table were very excited about that, some people at the table were very offended by that, and, um, that's okay, but that part of it is not gonna make it through this process, in my opinion, again.
Doesn't mean that we have to get rid of it, though, it's just another piece of, of, I, so, again, the next meeting is Wednesday, Oc- October twenty-sixth. I actually already have a neighborhood meeting scheduled for that night, so I won't be able to attend. Um, you all can let me know, we'll, uh, you know, I think John's the only one that has a name tag right now, so if you are interested, think about it, um, I'll also bring this up to the board.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta have some other citizen committee, uh, committees, don't you have also that can go attend? I mean.
We've got a bunch of new committees too, so we can pull some of those people.
Yeah, you got all kinds of new committees, and they're excited about that, so.
This is going on, just wanted to let you know, and if you're interested, let me know.
With the discussion, we have a request for condition use, conditional use permit for Ziggy's, uh, one, and it's for, um, music. You want to just make a quick comment about that?
Yep, so, um, Ziggy's, you might see some info, uh, they're gonna do a anniversary party, customer appreciation event later this month, uh, with some outdoor daytime music, and have applied for a temporary event permit for that, worked with Joy to get the alcohol premise description updated, um, gonna block off the alley. So, similar, uh, plan, Mike and Ziggy's would like to implement some outdoor music more on a regular basis next year and beyond. Um, in their conditional use permit that they got in twenty seventeen that was specifically prohibited is outdoor amplified music. Um, I believe that the neighbors, the Bossahams, were a big, um, part of that concern, and at least according to Mike, I haven't talked to, to Deb and her husband recently, um, that they're over all the time, and Deb's actually said, it would be kind of fun to have some music, and Ziggy's has been open beyond, uh, nine P M. at this point, so it really wouldn't be part of that late night, um, scene, uh, so he's, we haven't done the official conditional use permit revision request, and kind of wanted to get a read from you guys on if you would be willing to, um.
And I think, yeah, most of that would be probably occurring also during the summer when it's light.
Right, yeah, and I think at the twenties, thinking, you know, start out with once or twice a month, see how it goes. It would be likely kind of a Saturday afternoon.
Might be nice.
Type thing, so, um, if you're open to it, I'll let him know, and we can move forward and do that official conditional revision.
I mean, they're done at nine o'clock.
Yeah, right.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
That's the later.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, director of community, director of community develop report.
So, we just, um, hired our, uh, community services coordinator, um, her name is Leanne Rose. I don't know how much I told you all about that position, but largely the park and rec special event space. She's gonna, um, be working along with our park board on not only the park plan, but, uh, park reservations, which we kind of handed off to the school district last year. We're gonna take that back over, also looking at a fee structure for reserving our shelters and fields. We're one of the only communities that doesn't charge anything for that, and often that kind of, um, can come back to bite us, and people reserve a lot more time than they actually need. And so, just making sure that these spaces are available for everybody, and we're, um, you know, giving a little bit back on some of the, the public works time to set up extra facilities, things like that. So, she started last Friday, she's doing a great job so far, and if you see her around, she's right up by the front desk.
Yeah, I saw it, okay, yeah. All right, um, status of development projects, anybody have any questions about what's going on in town? How are we doing on that J.C. Park, Jeff?
I'm just gonna pull something up here. It's looking fantastic.
A lot of orange, orange implements, uh, pop up there last week.
Do you like, do you like that?
Yeah.
I do too. It was almost intentional, huh?
Yeah.
Let's see if this comes up. Okay, yeah, so, this was actually a few days, uh, last week. Um, I had a fresh one from this week, but I don't have it on this computer. But, uh, you can see, this is Oak Street up here, this is the two new parking lots, and the existing parking lot has been pulverized. So, this will all be new asphalt here, here, and here. Um, plenty of parking spaces, so we will actually be taking parking off of Oak Street entirely. So, it'll be, it'll be signed, no parking. Anyone who's ever driven through that, uh, Saturday or Sunday morning? Huh? It is a, it is a dangerous place. I'm surprised we didn't have a cat, a child hurt or killed along there. Um, so that's, that was the main purpose there. You can see the three main fields here, this is all phase two. Um, hopefully that'll come about, but, um, everything sprinkled, sprinkler irrigation on all the three fields and the playing field here. Um, we have a new well right here, so it's well water. That's a nice improvement over what we did out at Highlands and Netherwood Park. Um, this is gonna be a new parking lot, so that parking lot that was there, it was only two rows, is now gonna be like eight rows back into here, and then this is the pickleball courts that are being built, because that was brought back by the pickleball militia there that brought that in. Did I say that?
Be careful.
Why don't you tell us how you really feel about it?
No, they're just very, they're very intense.
Yes, they are, they're playing tonight very intently as I was coming down here.
No, they're good, they're, it's great. It's a lot of excitement with the sport and everything.
There is, yes.
So, and then you can see a walking path that goes all the way through here, there's also walking paths back here and here. This is a, uh, uh, nine flagpole, uh, thing, what we are doing in conjunction with the veterans. So, we have the state flag, or the U.S. flag, state flag, POW flag, and then the six branches of the gov- of the armed forces.
Excellent, excellent.
And you're thinking, I thought there were only five.
Space.
Space force is now the sixth.
Really cool flag.
Yeah, it is, it's kind of a cool flag, it's kind of a Star Trek-y flag, but, so that's gonna be really neat right here, and something neat for the, the veterans as well. Um, and then this whole area here is being, um, poured tomorrow with a laser screed, if anyone wants to go out and see that. Um, that's the whole, uh, this is the whole mezzanine area, um, and the concession stand building will go right in here. So, and it's all, uh, got path lighting as it goes through here, um, parking lot path lighting, parking lot lighting. We're excited about it.
Good. You know, I, I've had questions asked, and, and I think because COVID, we used to have a, a very active, uh, soccer tournaments, a soccer tournament here in the summer.
Fall Fury, it happened last weekend.
It did?
Moved from mid-July to September.
Yeah, it happened last weekend. Didn't have traffic in your neighborhood?
I'm trying to remember where I was.
Huh.
I was home, ah, no, I was, no.
Hundred and thirty-one teams, I was told.
Really?
You're wondering where their, their fields are, huh?
Yeah.
I think they were in Brooklyn, Pittsburgh, kind of spread out.
Well, I, I just, my grandson was down a couple of weeks ago, and they had one over in, uh, Aurora, and I was just shocked.
So, so these are still, this is still soccer field here, this is a small field here, and then this is a competition level field.
Yeah, it's crowded and everything.
If and when phase two's goes through, this becomes another full-size soccer field back here. This is a, a full-size ball field here.
Uh, well, these, uh, I want to get going here, what, are these baseball diamonds, softball diamonds?
They're, they're both, they're dual, baseball, softball, they're mount, they do not have mounds.
Oh, they do not have, okay, so then the question is, are we, is the Oregon area sock, I mean, uh, a sock, softball association, they're still gonna use the existing ones we have, or are they gonna move over to this?
Yeah, there'll, there'll be a combination of use of all the fields. I mean, we're still planning on using Kaiser Park.
Okay, that's.
There'll probably be a call to try to upgrade those a little bit, but we'll see.
That's all right.
But, yeah, this is coming up, so it's been seeded. Um, if you'll see a picture that's out on Facebook tonight, you'll actually see a, these are all taken by my friend, who's the guy that flies around in a little red airplane all the time.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and, uh, so he's been taking these periodically for me, and, um, you'll see the little yellow dots where they put, uh, erosion mat around each sprinkler head.
Yeah, I see that out there.
Yeah, so, it's really sharp.
Well, that's what, that's what's on that field, that when I drive by it.
Yeah, you see all these little, you see all these little yellow squares out here, and that's just, uh, you know, that, you know, it's that straw matting.
Right.
And just, it's good, because the, the company that's been doing this, the, the contractor and the landscape contractor and the electrical contractor have been fantastic.
Look like they know what they're doing, because it's.
They are doing an exceptional job.
They actually sewed the seed into the dirt, didn't they, when it looked, that's what I thought.
Yep, 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 they know what they're doing.
Great, thank you. Um, upcoming, upcoming meeting dates. Okay, but number one's not gonna be us. Plant commissioning, November third, November, uh, December first, um, I am open to, uh, birthday gifts on that day, so.
December first?
Yes, so just so you know.
Do you have to keep the meeting shorter for birthday gifts, right?
Um, okay, I can do that.
Yeah, well, I'll make a note.
Of course, those gifts should be deposited.
We can't have an ice cream cake, that's for sure.
No, but they have to be deposited outside, they have to be deposited outside the facility, so it's legal. All right, and you see the rest of the meeting dates. Staff meeting agendas, you see them here, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, guys, you've been a long night, thank you.